All planning board members on board here. So at seven o'clock on August 18th, 2025, I'd like to open up this Boxborough Planning Board meeting. This is being conducted by Zoom. You can always access the Zoom meeting invite via the Planning Board Agenda. The link is listed on the agenda and there's also a simple direct call in line on that agenda as well. That can be accessed on the Planning Board Packet. So to start things off, I'd like to take roll call of planning board members as I see you. Chris Doughty.
Doughty present.
Thank you. Cindy Markowitz.
Markowitz present.
Rich Ghazardi.
Ghazardi present.
Mark White.
White present.
And Werner present. Thank you. Okay, 7:00 PM. I want to just offer to the public any comments that are not listed on the agenda this evening. So if the public has any comments that they'd like to ask or have answered, please go ahead and raise your hands at this time. If you are calling in via phone, you can also raise your hand through the star nine function on your phone. I'm not seeing any public members raising their hands. So it is 7:01. Let's get some administrative done. We have a very busy agenda here today. Can we do some minutes, Alec? Terrific. Any comments from the board on the August 4th, 2025 minutes? Okay, I'm hearing no comments. Or do we need more time? Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the August 4th, 2025 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. So moved by Rich, seconded by Mark White. In order of how I see, roll call, Chris Doughty.
Doughty, aye.
Rich Ghazardi.
Ghazardi, aye.
Mark White.
White, aye.
Cindy Markowitz.
Markowitz, aye.
And Werner, aye. Any discussion? No, we just voted. Okay, moving on, let's go to the next one. Thank you very much, Alec. Any comments on the August 11th, 2025 meeting minutes as written? Okay, I'm hearing none. I entertain a motion to approve the August 11th, 2025 meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so moved by Mark White, seconded by Rich Ghazardi. Roll call, Chris Doughty.
Doughty, aye.
Cindy Markowitz.
Markowitz, aye.
Rich Ghazardi.
Ghazardi, aye.
Mark White.
White, aye.
And Werner, aye. Okay, great, thank you. One last thing at the end of the meeting. And it is not quite 7:05 yet. So what else do we want to cover? Anything under recently received correspondence? We did, we've definitely received a bunch of correspondence. Did you have anything particular to say regarding that at this point, Alec?
The board did receive. So as you'll note, you have many pieces of correspondence specifically for your public safety item. It was noted to our office that Chris Doughty is not on the automatic form as of yet. Mary was working on that earlier today and we thought we had it figured out, but not quite. I will note after I sent out your most recent email, we did receive one more piece of correspondence. I uploaded that to the public safety folder, but where that's related to a specific public hearing, we do not need to read it out at this time. Additionally, you do have updated notices in your packet from other towns and that's about it.
All right, terrific.
Final one, Kristen O'Neal, or was there one after hers?
Bear with me.
I think it was one afterwards.
Okay.
Yeah, that I, it came directly to me and Alec and I forwarded it back to Alec so he can post it for everyone.
Yes, I'll go look.
Perfect. Well, we could start on committee reports for a minute. Community preservation.
Doesn't meet for a couple of weeks, so.
Okay, DRB, nothing to report. EDC?
Same status as last meeting. We're meeting this week. Focus right now Village for a Day, which will be held in October. More to discuss on that. I think there was some information in Boxborough News on it as well.
Thanks, Rich. Magic. Still waiting.
First meeting is September 2nd and I'll be attending that one.
Perfect, thank you. Water Resources?
Yeah, they're meeting tomorrow night, but we will be discussing the draft water report that Weston and Sampson has prepared. It looks like it's almost complete, so hopefully that will be able to be shared with the public shortly. It's got a lot of good information in it. So very pleased to see how far along they've gotten on that.
Thanks, Cindy. And the BLF has not met. They'll be meeting in September as well. So, okay.
Just a second. Alec, you said there was a last, a late one that came in. It's not in the, the last one by time modified was the Karen O'Neal one. Was, is there another one?
Yeah, that's the most four hours ago.
That was Karen O'Neal.
I just refreshed it.
Maybe that, I don't know what order you put them in, Alec, so I'm not sure.
It looks like it's sorted alphabetical once they drop it in.
The one I was thinking of came in last night technically, so I'm assuming maybe you did get it in.
Yes, it appears Chris O'Neal was the most recent one. Admittedly, I did not know off the top of my head online. It was one after the time I emailed you.
Okay.
Just want to make sure we got them all.
Okay, so it's 7:06. We will go ahead and continue the public hearing for Beaver Brook Road, OSCD special permit. In accordance with MGL Chapter 40A in the Boxborough zoning bylaw, 7.5 open space commercial development and 2.3 special permits, the Boxborough Planning Board will conduct a public hearing to review the application submitted by property owner Campanelli Trigate Sub LLC to amend OSCD 97-01 and OSCD 01-01. Is the applicant here and prepared to kind of summarize the last materials that we got from you for the board?
Absolutely.
Okay, Johanna, we have a super tight, always this time of year, super tight.
I understand.
So I just, hopefully you can summarize in just a few minutes. I would love to keep it to 10 if we can.
Oh, we definitely can.
Okay, good. And my goal is to actually keep this whole hearing until 30 minutes if we can, so that we can move on to the other several hearings that we have this evening. So I appreciate whatever you can do to help make that happen.
Not a problem. Madam Chair, members of the board, Johanna Schneider with the Law Firm of Hemmerway &amp; Barnes. I'm project legal counsel here with the entire team. Rustian and Jeff Wyman from Campanelli. We also have our civil engineer, Garrett Horstfall, our natural resources expert, John Rockwood. And I believe that we also have Rob Misha, Bob Misha from MDM, our traffic consultant. We don't have a formal presentation this evening, so that fits well into the time constraints of the board. We did on August 11th provide what I think was a fairly comprehensive submission to the board, providing further detail and information about the matters that we understood were left as open items at the last meeting. This included a discussion of tax payments made by Campanelli, the calculations of the tax projections for the project that we are proposing to do. We provided some additional information about the solar facility. We clarified the FAR calculations. We provided some information about rodent control, some more information about Lot 800, talked about the parking reduction and some things that we are planning on doing to address some of the concerns that were raised about potential speeding through the park and also the operation of the gate. I'm not going to read through all of this because the board has had it for a week, but we are happy to answer any clarifying questions that the board may have on the materials that we did submit then.
Thank you so much, Johanna. I appreciate it. Let's see. So I'm going to allow the board to deliberate and then we'll open it up to any public comments that are out there right now. But one question that came to my mind right off the bat, Johanna, was that I had asked about consideration of reducing the size of the buildings and potentially reducing the height of the buildings. I did not see anything in the correspondence regarding those two items.
Well, Madam Chair, we did look at this and we know that it was something that you did ask us to look at. And I think that, you know, we took a closer look at Lot 800, which I think, you know, those were the buildings that you were asking about. And I think a couple of things that we wanted to just flag, I think the short answer is we don't think that we are able to reduce these buildings any further in height. But, you know, I think it's important to remember that they are actually fully compliant with what the bylaw requires. And in fact, we are also at what the bylaw says we can do for FAR. And with respect to setbacks in the application, as I know you've seen, we are actually providing significantly more of a rear yard setback than what is required by zoning. So I think we're in a situation where A, it's a competitive marketplace and we want to make sure that we have the ability to develop a product that we are actually able to find tenants for. But more than that, you know, we really have endeavored to, you know, at least, and again, we know that this is, I think everybody here knows, this is the OSCD master plan phase and the individual buildings will be back before the board for individual site plan review when we've got users in more detail about the design and the specific layouts of the buildings. But we really have made, you know, a lot of effort to keep this within the envelope required by zoning. I think we've done it. We have also, you know, managed to find ways to preserve as much open space and wildlife corridors on the site as possible. And, you know, we're hopeful that the board can support what we're showing.
Thank you for your response. Board members, I'd like to open it up for comments, additional comments or questions. Raise your hands. Go ahead, Mark, first up.
I just want to say thank you to Campanelli for basically providing everything we've asked you for. Doesn't look like a small amount of work, especially all the calculations. I'm sure we're going to have to kind of review those, make sure everything's squared. But thanks for doing that. And I'm feeling pretty positive about this at this point.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Cindy.
Yeah, I have one question on the response letter with regard to water supply. I just want to clarify. The, I think the response was that with regard to the new water line that Littleton Electric is putting through, 65,000 gallons per day are committed to the west area of Boxborough. And then there was a mention that 40,000 gallons per day are committed to Beaver, to the park. Is that 40,000 out of the 65,000 gallons per day? Or is that an additional 40,000 outside of the 65,000?
I'm going to ask Rustian to unmute himself and respond to that, just so that I don't answer incorrectly.
Sure. Good evening, board members. Cindy, the answer to your question is the 40,000 is part of the total 65,000 gallons per day. Is not on top of it.
Okay, so that leaves 25,000 gallons per day for the rest of the west end of Boxborough. This is what you're saying. Or I just want to make sure the math is right. So 40,000 out of the 65,000 in the commitment is going to the, is reserved for the park.
That is correct. And the way, the way Littleton arrived at that number in short detail is they did an extensive study of water use prior to pandemic, 2018, 19, and they assessed all of the properties accordingly. And the betterment fees for the pipeline are being charged based on the reserved water for each parcel.
Sorry, could you repeat that last line, Russ? It got a little garbled.
The betterment fees that are being charged by Littleton is based on the water gallons per day that's being reserved for each parcel.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I understand if, if the park doesn't use all 40,000 gallons, does that become available to other users? Or is that all committed to the park for the foreseeable future?
It depends from town to Littleton. We will be paying a betterment fee that is significantly higher than everyone else, fortunately. And the betterment fee is based on a reserve of 40,000 gallons per day. If Littleton wanted to adjust that, I'd be happy to talk to them about adjusting the betterment fees, but they're getting ready to charge betterment fees in the next quarter because the pipeline is nearly done. And I think that that would have to alter the interminable agreement that's been signed between Boxborough and Littleton.
Okay, and Russ, while we're on the subject of water, I think you referred to this the last time, but is, is it your plan to either decommission or no longer use the well that's currently supplying the park once the Littleton line becomes available?
We won't decommission the well. The well is completely up to DEP standards and gets upgraded every 24 months per advancing DEP regulations. And we will continue to do that. We will use that well as backup for fire prevention. We do have a full fire prevention system in the park. However, Littleton has expressed interest in the well, which that negotiation hasn't commenced, but they've talked about it three or four times. And once this pipeline is done, we will talk about that a little bit further. But the well will not be decommissioned, but we will be relying on the PFAS water for domestic use within the buildings.
Again, I'm sorry, the last line, you're going to be relying on which water for the domestic use?
The PFAS free water coming through the Littleton pipeline.
Okay, very good. Okay, I probably have a few more questions, but I'm going to hold those for now. I did want to just ask that the applicant take a look at the Boxborough Planning Board comments that were submitted through the MEPA process. I know that was back in 1990, sorry, 1993, 2023. Feels like 100 years ago. And ask that you folks take a look at those either commitments or information that you have provided at MEPA. And then I want to make sure that we capture the commitments that were made through the MEPA process as part of this special permit where it's applicable. So, you know, the planning board had extensive comments on both the ENF and the single EIR. And I understand you got your certificate on the EIR, but again, there were comments from the planning board and some commitments made by the applicant. So I would just ask that you folks review those and I want to make sure that we capture those in the special permit, as I said, where applicable. So I just wanted to make that note. That's all I have for now. I may others as we proceed, but thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Go ahead, Rich.
Thank you, Rebecca, and thank you, Campanelli, for answering the questions and providing the additional information. I guess, you know, at this point, I, you know, we've, I think we, I guess I'll ask my fellow board members. I feel like we have the information we've asked for. Are we, and I know Rebecca, we've only scheduled 30 minutes tonight for this, given the agenda we have. Like I don't, I imagine we're not going to close the public hearing tonight, but I, at some point, we probably need to deliberate on, you know, how, how close are we? Are we, do we, you know, what are some of the things that are concerns? Or are we looking for more information? I think I've, we've gotten a lot. We've got a site visit. We understand the site. We understand what some of the concerns are. Like I, I'm, I sort of have what I need and I'm, I'm ready to start talking about what, you know, what good might look like. But that's just kind of where I am and I don't know if others have similar feelings, but yeah. Thanks.
Rich, go ahead, Chris.
But since asked, I guess, yeah, I am, I do have similar feelings. I do appreciate the responsiveness, especially the, to the butters and other the various like public comment concerns. So that's, that's really the only, the main open question for me to see if there is any additional like questions or things that they, from the public.
That's it, okay. I just want to make sure you're done. Thank you. Any other comments, board members, at this point? Okay, oh, Cindy?
Yeah, just going back, looking through some of the public comments. You know, I do believe Campanelli has addressed most of them. I'm thinking about the rare species and the management plan. Again, it sounds like there's still more negotiation to be done with Natural Heritage, but I want to make sure that continues. I am a little bit concerned about the gate and the traffic flow. I know Campanelli has indicated they would be willing to put in speed bumps. I think we ought to have some discussion about the gate. If the, if the board is willing, just trying to think of some of the other public comments that we received. Because there is additional traffic coming through that gate into, into Boxborough that might not otherwise come through that way. As I said, there's a number of other comments, just getting back to the comment letters that we received about the habitat and trying to preserve and maybe make more contiguous habitat. You know, I know the layout of the three buildings on Lot 800 as we walked the site, there was some, at least some discussion about perhaps consolidating those buildings or perhaps rather than three buildings, you know, might do two buildings and reduce the amount of footprint and therefore the amount of impervious and allow for greater contiguous habitat in that area. So I guess, just trying to reflect some of the comments that we've heard. And it doesn't sound like we got any different configuration at this stage or commitments, I guess, to, to do those things. So just want to know whether or not, you know, Campanelli, I understand you're trying to maximize the value of the land. You know, hopefully we can strike some kind of a balance where you're still able to do that. But could we get some additional commitments about perhaps extending the, the amount of habitat, reducing the amount of impervious while still allowing you to achieve, you know, the goals that you're trying to do for, to make this work for you?
So Cindy, with respect to your first question about the species management plan, John Rockwood has prepared an extensive plan and has submitted it to Natural Heritage. It's under review in their office at this time. And it's not a plan that Natural Heritage likes having out in the public realm. That's, that's a statement directly from them. John can comment on that, but I wanted to let you know that that management plan was submitted since the last meeting we got together. Regarding our application, we've studied the land extensively and we've given up extensive valuable development land in some of these areas that will be restricted. We feel we've struck a very nice balance between a habitat, starting with the Cisco process over 20 years ago with 350 acres and putting over 250 in restriction and allowing for many natural vegetated corridors to remain on the site, committing to not developing buildings and parking lot services, surfaces within wetland setback areas, and then committing to a lower parking ratio, which opens up 10, almost 11 more acres of open space within the lots. But we feel we've offered a very robust program and our application as submitted remains as you understand it. So thank you very much.
Rich, go ahead.
Yeah, so the, I just wanted to comment on the, on the back gate because I saw the, the comments back from Campanelli in the, in the letter. And I would, I certainly want to hear more from the public and this board on it, but I actually like the idea of that back gate open. And maybe I'm, maybe I'm not reading it right, but in my mind, the, if there's traffic going into that park coming from Littleton or Harvard, I'm good with it coming through the back gate as opposed to coming down Swanson Road. To me, that makes sense. I do think speed tables or speed bumps is a really good way to prevent through traffic. Right, if you, if you've got the choice of I'm going to get into Boxborough and I'm going to deal with, you know, six speed tables along Beaver Brook Road or I'm just going to go onto 111, I'm going to take 111. So I think that is a way to mitigate the through traffic aspect. Obviously, Campanelli is going to have to deal with winter road maintenance and however, however they want to do that with speed tables or with speed bumps. But to me, that sounds like a pretty good solution and a mitigation to traffic on Swanson Road. So anyway, I certainly want to hear from the public. I may not be digesting all the elements of that, but that sounded like a good solution. Thanks.
Only thing I would say to that, Rich, is like just a concern about this becoming a cut through because I think that could add, added, you know, stress to that Swanson Road. When it has been discussed that maybe that gate could be like a, you know, wave your pass kind of thing or you have a fob or something to get into the park itself. But 111 is definitely overburdened in some, at some points in the day. Mark White, please. Go ahead. Mark, you're muted.
Sorry. Regarding the gate as well, A, it's clear that the amount of traffic there isn't very substantial currently. And B is, I mean, it's diverting a lot of traffic from Littleton County Road and Oak Hill. So, you know, for the butters, for the people who live on those two roads, people who need to get from 111 must now go transit Littleton County Road and the people who decide to cut through to get to the other end don't have to traverse that stretch. So I'm going to guess that you're not going to have a lot of people who live on Littleton County Road arguing with the cut through because it does reduce the amount of traffic that's on their road. I mean, it may bump up a little bit what's on Swanson Road, but remember Swanson Road was optimized for, for more traffic than this will ever generate. So I think, I like having the gate there too. And I know the protective services in both towns like having it as well. That's, that's it.
Thanks, Mark. Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, I also, I honestly like the gate being open. But remember when I, when I first moved here and lived in, lived in Brook Village and that gate was down and that seemed really weird, like why does this road go to nowhere? And no one's allowed to drive it in what felt like a public way. So I think it makes sense to have it open. If we need to mitigate speeds, if there's like a lot of cut through or if there's projected to be a lot of cut through at, at a unreasonable rates of speed, I think speed bumps is a very good way to make it, if you've got a reason to go from point A to point B, to, to take that cut through, but you know, you have to slow it down. If you're just trying to get there as fast as possible, you'll avoid the speed, you'll avoid that cut. So I think that's a, a balance that would make sense if that's needed. But I'm not sure if it's even needed. So I got.
Any other board comments at this time? Okay. I would just like to share a couple of things. I was actually a little disappointed, I would say, to hear that there was no consideration in trying to reduce the size of these buildings because this is something that we have heard from the public as well. And, you know, to that point, I believe at the last meeting, it was noted that the goal would be to develop buildings that were similar to TUV on site. So, you know, that's half the size of what is being proposed out there on property right now with this, with this request. So I'm half expected to see a little bit of movement at least on that myself, as well as the, the height of those buildings, you know, specifically the ones that are flanking 700 and 800, I guess, that are right backing up to that residential development. Because this building, you know, as proposed, could potentially be, you know, looking straight into, you know, those residential units, you know, I appreciate the 100 foot setback, but that's really the bare minimum we could do with the fact that that development has been approved and installed on that, that site. I'm also still struggling a little bit to get my head around, you know, the kind of anticipated benefits to the community on, on this project as well. I do appreciate the gesture, the $25,000 to, you know, help support a design effort for a parcel of land. But that is about, if, if, if we were to adopt that property parcel, you know, that we're looking at, you know, two years of taxes there and we own the tax bill for that for the, you know, until we don't own the property again, right? until we don't own the property again, right? Or we sell it. So, um, with this, I think that's a little burdensome. Um, from my perspective, you know, that we, um, are adopting a big tax bill on a parcel of land that um, that is being offered here. So, um, those are the couple of things that I wanted to share as well. Um, are there any additional board, uh, comments or else I'm going to go ahead and, uh, miss up to public comment again. Cindy, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, Rebecca, I did also want to, um, share your concern about the, uh, the acceptance of, uh, lot 100 to the town. Um, you know, I didn't see it as a priority parcel on the open space and recreation plan. Um, it, it's, it generates about 10 to $11,000 of tax revenue currently, um, annually. So we would be losing that revenue once the town owns it. Uh, I understand that the town might repurpose it and be able to use it for some sort of passive recreation, but I'm a little bit hesitant to, um, accept that, i- i- albeit a generous offer, um, because it does seem to burden the town with having to now maintain another property. Um, and, you know, I was hopeful that something perhaps more, uh, useful to the town, you know, might happen there. And even if it was a developed property by Campanelli, I think originally in the Cisco days, it was proposed to possibly the conference center and that actually might be something that might benefit the town in, in another way. So I'm a little hesitant about that, um, accepting that. Again, I appreciate the offer, um, but I do think there could be some um, detriment to the town by having that parcel, um, although, you know, some might see it as a, a pathway to the esker and I understand there might be some natural resource benefit there, but, um, I, I, I could see it as possibly being a burden to the town. So I, I did, uh, sort of want to raise that discussion with board members as well. I mean, perhaps there's something else, um, rather than that parcel that might be of value to the, to the board, the, to the town that the board might want to contemplate, but I did, I agree with you, Rebecca. It may not be um, as positive, uh, uh, an, an offer as, as it might appear, although again, I'm grateful to Campanelli for making the offer. So I don't want to look the gift horse in the mouth, but, uh, I do have those concerns. Thanks.
Thanks, Cindy.
Yeah, just very briefly, we just started popping up on the screen, the list of, you know, offers that we would envision could turn into conditions. We are hopeful that, you know, we can discuss all of these things with the board, but you know, we thought it might be useful, you know, just as we move into the next phase of review and discussion to have them in one place. This is not to interrupt the board's flow, but I thought this might be a helpful reference.
Thank you. Um, can we? I, I'm just, please ask if, if you're going to put up exhibits and stuff like that. I, I just would like to get through questions and answers and stuff and keep directed on the board, please. Um, Chris Doughty, I'm seeing your, your hand up. Becky, I will, um, recognize you in just a moment when we switch over to public comment. Okay?
Yeah. I just had a process question. So if, if lot 100 was, you know, given to the town, um, I believe any, uh, town meeting would still need to vote on that to accept it?
That's correct.
Okay. I, I thought so. So, and, yeah, I was just curious the process there because, uh, I guess that it, it isn't really our decision necessarily. If the town thinks that that parcel is, the, the benefits of having it, uh, don't outweigh the benefits of leaving, leaving it alone, then I guess town meeting would decide that. That's all I had.
Thank you, Chris. Um, Alec, are you running the screen here?
Um, no, it, uh, it looks like Jeff Lyman has his screen share up.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, if you'd like, we can take it down. Again, we, we're just trying to be helpful.
Yeah, I'd like to, thank you so much. I appreciate the helpfulness. I just, um, want to get through some comments here. So if you don't mind, thank you. Um, Matt, uh, Mark, go ahead.
Um, actually I thought that was helpful because, I mean, you're asking about benefits to the town and that was a list of the benefits to the town. Uh, regarding building size reduction, uh, they're already currently more than compliant. And I, I guess the question to other board members is, would we prefer a lower height, but a larger building footprint? So that, that's one question to, you know, the people who, who want to see reduced building size. And as far as benefits, I mean, conservation land, it's a benefit. I always thought getting conservation land was a benefit. If it's not a benefit, then would we prefer they build a building there? Because that's what they could do. They could build a building there and they're giving it to us. And, and they're going to gift it to us. And so for $10,000 a year worth tax revenue, which is be nice to have, but it's nicer to have a piece of property. I mean, I, I'd rather have a piece of property that is the entry point to that whole conservation area behind it. We can use that for a lot of different things. And yes, and to Chris's question, uh, yeah, the town would decide to accept it or not. If we don't want to accept it, then, then the Campanelli would have to keep it and figure out what to do with it. I mean, maybe a conservation restriction is all you want. But, uh, I mean, how, how much do we get to ask for when they've, they've given us quite a bit already? I, I think this is a pretty square deal. So I, I, I just, I, I just, I want to know what the deal breakers are here now because if we're going to start asking these kinds of questions and I want to know what your, what members are going to vote no on. What's going to create a no vote? What's going to create a yes vote? That's what I want to know from my other board members.
Thanks, Mark. Um, Rich, go ahead.
Yeah. And to that, I guess, um, not to overcomplicate this, but there was a list and that was a very good question, Chris. Thank you. We've recently had examples on a much smaller scale where there was an agreement by the planning board in a site plan that, or a subdivision that certain land was going to be given to the town and the planning board walked away with that impression and then it later then got to the select board and was not put on the town meeting warrant. Then we ended up on a whole issue with that. Um, so it might make sense for the board to identify what are those sort of deal items, uh, or, or concessions, if you will, or trade in the trade space that we ought to probably talk to somebody else. Like, I think it's a good question to ask either the land stewards or the Boxborough Conservation Trust or whomever, like, is it a good idea for us to take lot 100 off the, the books? I thought it was, but like, what do I know? I'm, I, you know, just anytime you can get land, I always thought that's a good deal. But if the answer is we're going to give up some amount of tax dollars, maybe, maybe the town would rather pass on it. And I'd hate to say we'll accept that as a concession if we're later going to reject it. So there's probably a group of things on that list that we want to coordinate with a couple of key people, whether it's the select board, whether it's the Boxborough Conservation Trust or ConsCom, like, let's get it straight. So that's kind of first point. Um, the second point is, you know, in terms of Mark, you know, kind of getting to the, you know, is it the yes or the no? I'd like to see us get to yes. And, and I, so I am interested in knowing kind of what the, what is within the trade space among the board members because I think personally, I think anytime we can do an open space development as opposed to just a standard conventional development, I think that's good for the town. Um, so I'd like to see us get to yes. And this is a special permit requires, you know, four out of five votes. So, yeah, I'll just put that out on the table and, you know, so I think that is a discussion worth having. And a very important discussion to have. So, thank you, Rebecca.
Um, and yeah, I, I totally agree with you. It'd be great to get weigh in on the value, you know, as seen for conservation on that. I'm not a hundred percent confident or sure what that answer is either. So I agree with you on that. Um, and perhaps we have a member of, uh, you know, of one of these groups that can actually speak to it tonight when we get your comment. Um, uh, Russell, you have your hand up right now. Would you like to respond here?
Yes, thank you, Rebecca. Um, I do want to comment on the tax question and I think this might help and you could talk to your tax assessor. If you look at the tax exhibit table, um, prior to TUV lot being developed, TUV was always taxed as a developable lot of a certain size and capacity. So prior to it being developed, it generated a little less than $30,000 a year in tax revenue. Since it's been fully occupied, it now generates almost $140,000 a year. So let's just use round numbers. The tax has increased on a TUV parcel to the town by $100,000. Um, additional lot 600 wouldn't, would be similar to TUV because the capacity on 600 is about the same. Lot 100 today is taxed as a developable lot. That has been in the OSCD in the past. We're removing it from the value of land in a developable capacity. It's taxed at almost $12,000 a year. The moment it goes into restriction, the tax on that land will drop to about $2,200. It taxed on restricted land is between three and $400 an acre as opposed to developed land. That, that lot has water, sewer and utilities. Um, and it was part of a previous OSCD. Um, you know, if the board felt that that lot needed to stay on the tax rolls, Campanelli would not object to that. It, the tax just gets less. It's a natural process. Um, what really matters is, um, a tax increase on, on lots that remain as subject to this permit. So I just wanted to associate the value of developable land versus restricted land.
Thank you, Russ. I appreciate that. Uh, board comments, any other board comments at this time? Otherwise I will open it up to public comment. Okay, um, let's see, opening it up to public comment, uh, please keep your comments to, uh, two minutes. I can always circle back to you if you have another one. Uh, I just want to make sure that everybody has a chance to, uh, speak. Uh, Becky, I see your hand up first. Thank you for your patience.
Thanks, Rebecca. I just want to say as someone who's on a fixed income, I think any, I mean, $10,000 in taxes from lot 100 is nothing when you compare the value we're going to get from a build, build, built out building because we're going to have personal property taxes and real estate taxes from anything they build. And I say, build them bigger and don't make the footprint so big. Make them taller. Don't make the footprint so big. But we're going to see significant tax increase and that's really going to benefit the residents of Boxborough. So I really hope you support this to the extent possible. Um, so they don't have to jump through too many hoops so we can get this done sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thanks, Becky. Um, Rita, I see your hand up. I should have reminded, um, if the public can just say their names and their, um, their addresses, please, when they, when they speak. Um, we just lost, uh, Rita. Did she?
No, I'm here.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
I'm here. Um, I'm Rita Gibbous Grossman. I'm the president of the Boxborough Conservation Trust. And I would like to say that I appreciate what, um, Campanelli's done to address the issues on 700 and 800 in terms of maintaining any of the integrity, the, you know, the habitat integrity is, can be held. Um, in terms of 100, those five acres, I think yes, it's quote unquote, developable land, but if you look at the where that land is located, that is the access point for the Beaverbrook Valley Preserve. And that's where people park when they go to hike there. Um, it abuts wetlands. On the other side is the pond. What I would like to propose is Boxborough has a lot of hiking area. But what's really needed is for those people pushing strollers or walking with crutches, a place where they can go and enjoy the natural environment. And given the density of residents on Swanson Road, having 100 as, um, an undeveloped open space with maybe some very accessible trails, it then adds to the, um, the trail that already exists around the pond. So, and not doing anything to risk the abutting wetlands. Um, in terms of development, that parcel is right next to the highway. So I'm not sure of its desirability of development being so close to the highway and the highway noise. But I think as a place to walk, it would be fine. And I think protecting the habitat integrity there, um, is pretty significant. So on behalf of the Boxborough Conservation Trust, we greatly appreciate that this is going to be donated to whatever conservation entity will be willing to take it. And I know Sudbury Valley Trustees is here with Meredith Houghton. Um, I, I mean, I think the Conservation Commission would be willing to take it and I don't know, has the Recreation Commission weighed in on this? Rebecca, do you know?
I don't know the answer to that, but I definitely appreciate you speaking to, um, you know, the use on that property. Um, I do think that we do have some homework to just reach out to the Recreation Commission and, um, you know, as well as, I'd love if there is a representative of SVT here on this. I'd love to hear from them as well.
Well, there is a move in the conservation community right now to try and create more accessible space for people who can't go whipping up the hills, um, and, and climbing on trails. So, um, and, and also make it, you know, more engaging for people with really young children and strollers and all this other stuff. So I think that could be, uh, a really good use of that space.
Perfect. Thank you. Great feedback. I appreciate it, Rita. Thank you. Um, um, just a second, Kristen, but Alec, can we put that on our to do list? Is reaching out to RecCom?
And if you don't- Yes, I've added it to my little checklist running for things to do.
Okay.
Yes, I will. Uh, the RecCom does have a meeting scheduled for, um, a week from tomorrow night. I'm actually scheduled to be on their agenda, so I can note it. Um, to date, the RecCom has provided no feedback on the application, although they were included in the original circulation.
Can we also ask that be circulated to ConsCom, that same inquiry?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
Perfect. So ConsCom, SVT and, uh, RecCom. Perfect. All right. Great. Thank you. Uh, Kristen, uh, please go ahead.
I, I'm only chiming in because you asked if any of the members of the other boards, you know, had any thoughts. Um, Select Board hasn't just-
Address quickly, sorry.
Sorry, Kristen Hilberg, 1112 Hill Road. Sorry. Um, I, so the Select Board hasn't actually discussed this, but what we have discussed is that Campanelli has been a great neighbor to the town. And we're also very concerned about our financial future. Um, to echo Becky, you know, having just come off the Finance Committee, you know, looking at, um, revenue versus the value of additional conservation land, the town has always been so supportive of acquiring additional land. And, and I'm someone who has walked the esker. I used to take my dogs out there. It is absolutely gorgeous. And to have an accessible path would be amazing. So Rita, I love your idea, you know, kind of adding to what we have at Liberty Fields where it's an accessible area to create more of a natural environment with accessibility. So Campanelli, if you're hearing that, we, the Select Board would much appreciate your thoughts on that too. But, but yeah, I, I think honestly, the Select Board's main concern right now is revenue and how we're going to fund our future. So if, you know, if the board can just keep that in mind, what I heard is Campanelli said they are within the zoning bylaws. Um, that's what I heard. So, you know, definitely I need to learn some more and, and, um, and, and I'll bring it back to the Select Board for discussion.
Thank you. Uh, Meredith, thank you for raising your hand. I see you're representing SVT, so we'd love to hear from you right now.
Yeah. Hi, everybody. Meredith Houghton here, uh, Senior Land Protection Specialist at Sudbury Valley Trustees, the regional land trust in the area, which includes Boxborough and Harvard uh, aptly. So, um, I, I just wanted to, to echo, um, what Rita said with 100. Um, it's something I can go back to my folks, um, about interest if, if that is an ask of SVT. We always defer to the locals. So if the RecCom, ConsCom town has interest or BCT, you know, that's, that's what we do. Um, but, but I will talk with my people as well. Um, and I just wanted to, to ask, um, or, or I'm not sure there was clarity on this other point, but with the proposed, um, 94 acres for protection, I know something we have harped on in previous meetings was just um, asking for clarification on what the mechanism is for permanent protection for those acres that are being proposed for protection. And also when that would happen in this process, um, you know, ideally before development. So just chiming in on a topic that I don't think has been hit on in a little bit, at least in the conversations, um, that that is extremely important to us at SVT, knowing the how and the when of that, but we love obviously the sentiment and, uh, we thank you all. Thanks.
Thank you, Meredith. Um, I do think that we do, we have the, um, timeline, you know, kind of, we did address that a little bit, but, um, I think that, that is something that we can speak to if this um, uh, ends up moving forward. So, yeah, um, thank you for that input and I appreciate it. Um, oh, Rita, I see your hand up again. Go ahead.
Um, yes, just one quick comment about the taxes on 100. You also have to weigh in the cost to community services. So depending on what, I heard something about a conference center or something to go on that five acres, um, it, it would be a congested area, um, if with a lot of traffic and depending on how it's used. There are, there is a cost to community services there. So that would have to be, you know, calculated into the quote unquote, uh, tax benefit. So uh, it looks like 700 and 800, um, you know, and then the development of 600 is going to generate, you know, good income for the town. And, um, I'll stop there.
Thank you, Rita. Okay. Any other public comment at this time? Okay, I am seeing no more public comment. Um, so turning it back to the board, um, it sounds like we have collected a lot of information. Thank you very much, Campanelli team for providing us with all the items that we- for providing us with all the items that we've asked to date. Alec, would you suggest that we continue this just so that we can get the comments from like ConsCom and all of those groups that we mentioned?
Yes, we can certainly continue this out. I would recommend at this stage, if the board is going to consider continuations of this application or your next application, we should do so after your September 3 meeting, only because the September 3 meeting will be the last opportunity for the board to work on the warrant articles for public hearing. And frankly, I don't think that we'll have the capacity to give the applicants the full breadth of time to negotiate conditions, to settle out the applications and finalize a decision, which I do apologize to both applicants. I don't like to say that, but it's the fact of where we are in the Fall Town Meeting schedule right now. Let me pull up your calendar, and I can let you know.
While you're doing that, Alec, you know, I have heard board members saying, what are the sticky points for any members on this call right now? I feel like I've made my sticky points known today and at our last hearing that we discussed it. I definitely, and this is largely concerning 700 and 800. You know, I have heard a number of comments from the community about the value of the grasslands out there. I'm always a big supporter of reducing impervious. I did hear the applicant say, we're trying to make this campus look like TUV-style buildings. So size of the buildings is important to me. Height of the buildings is important to me. Conserving, you know, valued land out there is important. The traffic was definitely something I brought up last time, so I would like to make sure we have a good solution for calming through that roadway. It's a beautiful piece of property, driving through there, walking through there, and it's just, it's nice to keep it as pedestrian as we can. So those are my items. I don't know if any of the other board members want to share any additional guidance at this time. Cindy, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Rebecca. And again, thanks, Campanelli. We certainly do appreciate everything that you have put forward in the way of benefits. I guess I'm going to sort of make the comment that I made prior, an earlier meeting, is that many of the items on that list, the benefits, while much appreciated, are already sort of in place. The 94 acres, I think only five of that, if I have my numbers right, five of it is Lot 100 is new. The rest of it has just, it hasn't been formally protected. It was agreed that it would be protected, but I know some of it could be developed, much of it is wetland, but essentially, you know, my concern, I guess, is what kind of additional benefits are we really getting? The volleyball and the basketball courts have been there for some time. I think, just trying to think the other list. You know, one of the things I had asked about was, you know, would Campanelli consider assisting with the sidewalk on Swanson Road? Now, I understand the traffic data that you provided shows that 25% of the traffic on Swanson Road is generated by the park. The remaining is generated by Swanson Road. You know, I had asked earlier if Campanelli might consider helping. There's a section of the sidewalk from 111 to the beginning of Swanson Road where there's no sidewalk, and it's very dangerous for pedestrians there. So, you know, that was an ask that I would like to at least ask Campanelli to reconsider. And again, we appreciate the amenities that are there, but just wondering whether there are any additional amenities, because we are, in addition to tax revenue, our first decision criteria is social and community needs. And we definitely appreciate the open space. You know, much of that is already there. So I guess, I don't want to sound greedy, but, you know, I am hopeful that there might be some additional benefits, social and community benefits, that could be brought to the project before the board has, you know, we'd like to hear if Campanelli has anything else. Doesn't have to be at this meeting, but beyond the list that they've provided to date, which I am certainly appreciative and don't mean to sound that I'm not, but many of those items are already in place. So would ask that you reconsider perhaps any additional social, community benefits you might be able to offer. It would be appreciated. Thanks.
Thanks, Cindy. Also, just one last thing, and I know that you all have heard us go through the TUV application, too, but sustainability goes a long way with this particular board and with our community just in general. So the solar panels, those are terrific, but reduction of impervious, any kind of, you know, ride-sharing or, you know, carpooling or vans or whatever we could do, solar on the buildings, you know, any of those things are usually received pretty well. So I just want to share that additional guidance. Okay, Alec. Oh, any other board comments at this time? Yeah, Rich, I see you.
My only comment is, I think, see, thank you for laying out kind of what your sort of cons or issue, you know, sort of deal breakers are, or key points. I guess what I'd like to propose, and I know we were heading to the, go to Alec and then talk to the applicant, and when are we going to meet next? I'd like to give it, like, due time. I know we've got a busy schedule between now and September, whatever, but like that meeting, I imagine we're going to reopen the hearing because we don't want to close it, because we want to have, you know, open and frank discussions. But I'd like to say, let's try to use that meeting as an opportunity to kind of get as far as we can. So I know we tend to crowd these meetings with things, but I think this one needs, they've been in the queue for a while here.
Yeah, totally hearing you on that point, and I feel the same way. It's definitely not the intent to to drag this out any more than we need to. I'd love to get one thing off of our plate, frankly. But, so yes, I completely agree with you about streamlining an agenda, you know, for this. So Alec, with that, what do we need to do, my friend?
Looking ahead, looking ahead, your September 15 agenda is completely clear at this point. We could reserve that exclusively for applications. We will also have the deadline for the printer behind us when it comes to the Fall Town Meeting warrants, so we can guarantee that that won't overlap with any of these items. That would additionally give time, at least two meetings worth of time, for the Conservation Commission and possibly even the RecCom to provide their feedback, as well as for us to have a dialogue with the applicant behind the scenes as well.
Okay. I'm just looking to the applicant, Johanna, or Russ, do you want to just, I'm assuming that would be okay with you? I apologize that we are so strapped for time. The board has been so busy with this and other things. So I'm just looking to you to let me know if--
No, what I would say to the board is, we respect certainly your process. We started this process on a delay from Campanelli's side, which coincided with the town's prep for Spring Town Meeting. So we started this process then. We'd like to conclude the process. We are seeing a slight change in the marketplace. And as Johanna said earlier, we want to be able to indicate that we have permitted land. And I'm not in that position right now. So whatever the board can do as scheduling would be awesome. So thank you.
Would anybody like to go ahead and make a motion to continue to September 15, assuming 7:05 PM?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. So moved by Rich Gazzardi and seconded by Chris Doughty. Thank you. In order of, well, any deliberation or any discussion about that before we go ahead and vote? Okay, seeing none. In order of how I see it, Cindy Markowitz.
Markowitz, aye.
Thank you. Chris Doughty?
Doughty, aye.
Rich Gazzardi?
Gazzardi, aye.
Thank you. Mark White?
White, aye.
Thanks. I'm Burner, aye. Thank you, Campanelli team, for coming in and meeting with us once again. And thanks for your patience as we get a couple of things ticked off our list here.
Three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You.
Okay, let's see. We are at 7:59. We are going to now continue the public hearing for 9:75 Massachusetts Ave, Site Plan Review and Stormwater Management Permit. In accordance with MGL Chapter 40A, the Boxborough Zoning Bylaw 2.5, Site Plan Approval, and the Boxborough Stormwater Bylaw, the Boxborough Planning Board will continue a public hearing to review the application submitted by Goldsmith, Prest, and Ringwall Incorporated on behalf of the applicant BHG109 LLC to construct an eight contractor, eight-unit contractor storage facility. Okay, so as a recap, I guess, to the public, this particular applicant did extend an invitation to all of the board members. Mark White, are you recused on this one?
Yeah, I was waiting to get that in, because I'm in a butter, I must recuse myself from this conversation. I'll be back when you start the next discussion.
Terrific. Thank you, Mark. So just recapping, that the board members were invited out to the site, and that would exclude Mark White as in a butter. But the town planner was there, our places, our civil engineer was on site, and I think we divided up. And I believe most everyone got out there to see the property. And so during the visit, the applicant had had the building staked out, the edges of the paving staked out, the edge of clearing staked out. So it was very helpful just to, for the board to walk through the site and be able to see kind of what it looks like, see the topography and the clearing that's going to be required, and then just kind of test out what the visibility would be from 111, from town-owned lands and hiking trails in the back, et cetera. So I'm going to, I see you, Alec. Do we have an applicant here to talk to us tonight?
Yep, he's there.
We do. I just wanted to give a further update for the board, too. It's come to my attention that in the afternoon on Friday, your consulting engineer did provide to us a peer review response. Unfortunately, with the variety of comments we got in on public safety, that missed in my workflow, and I have not had the opportunity to provide that back to the board. The applicant has seen it, so they may very well have had the opportunity to get started on some of those responses. But as you're considering how you want to structure this hearing, Madam Chairperson, I figured you should know, or you should be aware, that Sue has provided a review, which will be given to the board first thing tomorrow morning. She may be able to summarize some of those comments, and the applicant may be prepared to start responding to some of those.
Okay. Thank you for the update, Alec. And Sue, is she on the call at this time? All right. Perfect. Sorry, it's difficult for me to scroll through the members on the screen. Okay, so thanks for that insight. Of course, the board has not been able to look at it yet, so we won't really be considering that in full. But I would love to maybe hear from Sue Carter if she would like to just speak to your feedback, or perhaps we should have our applicant present first and then hear what Sue has to say in response. Why don't we do it that way?
All right.
There you are. Hi, how are you?
I'm good. How are you? Good evening, everybody. My name is Limhot Tiff. I'm a project engineer at Goldsmith, Prest, and Ringwall. I'm here representing, I'm here tonight as a representative for BHG109 LLC. Thank you for summarizing what had happened so far, the site walk. So I'd like to kind of quickly, let me see here, if I'm able to share my screen. I'd like to kind of quickly go over some of the comments that we received last time, as well as kind of go through the changes that we had done for the plan. I think first and foremost, I can start with the landscaping plan that was provided. So we heard your comments about wanting to see a stamped landscaping plan, stamped by landscape architect. This was provided. As part of the changes to the planting, proposed planting, we provided more native planting for the site, as well as a role of planting as screening for the front of the building, right on top of the proposed retaining wall along here. As I understand, there was a recommendation made during the site walk about the type of type of planting that would be more appropriate for the area due to, I guess, deer's liking to eat these shrubs. You know, we're open for a recommendation and, you know, are willing to work with the board as to what plant would work best. We also heard a comment regarding the need to provide screening along the bottom of the proposed retaining wall over here. Again, we have no problem with providing those additional plantings. I would imagine they're going to be spaced very similar to the one on top. So we have 11 shown on top. I'm certain it'll be in the range of 15 to 18 plant down at the bottom. Moving to the back of the site there. We're providing a tree protection fence along the stone wall that we walked. Additional plantings are also provided for this back area. And in addition to the tree protection plan, we're also proposing on our site plan, let me just switch over here. Additional note to commit to having an arborist on site to supervise the grading work as well as the planting work that will happen in this area, just making sure that, you know, when they go to cut in the soil, as well as planting new trees, it wouldn't affect the roots of the abutting trees on the town's land. So I believe that is the bulk of the changes associated with the site plan. I do want to talk a little bit, just to kind of bring up the, some of the points that we made, I made during the site walk itself. And I'm sure I'm probably just repeating myself again, but just want to make sure we get that on record. This is an exhibit plan showing a cross-sectional view of the site as you're standing on Mass Ave, looking in roughly through the middle of the building. So the top of the building here is the peak, all the way to where you would be if you're standing on the trail at the back of the property. This document was provided during the site walk and later on submitted as a PDF through the town planner. So just kind of want to quickly talk through what we discussed. We had parked at the property next door at 881 Mass Ave, hopped over the stone fence and walked on the trail to get to where I'm showing the cursor over here, to the back of the, at the, standing on the trail, looking at the back of the building. As you're standing on the trail, looking at the back of the building, the building was sighted approximately 15 feet from the peak of where you have the ledge outcrop, essentially the peak of the site itself, shaving down approximately 15 feet, placing the base of the building 15 feet down. So as you're standing on a trail, you're only looking up about 15 feet to the peak center of the proposed building. As I mentioned, the existing building next door is approximately 25 feet high. And the elevation from the trail, looking at the existing building, you know, you're standing on the same similar elevation as the base of the building next door. So as you're standing on the trail, looking in, you're looking up at about 15, 25 feet height of a building. So in terms of view impact, we're shorter in terms of a height difference if you're standing on a trail, looking in, as the existing building. Moving on, just wanted to bring up an additional exhibit. So this exhibit was submitted as a PDF to the town. This was done in response to a request from Steve from ConsCom, who joined us on the second day of the site walk. This exhibit here shows you the approximate limit of work associated with an alternative driveway layout if you were to make the connection from the abutting property. We generally feel that, you know, it is not under the same ownership, just because, although it's the same owner who's, I guess, managing the site, it's not the same ownership. And I believe the applicant also has planned to sell the property to finance the proposed project. You know, we were hesitant to provide the exhibit plan as shown, but we figured, we're trying to be cooperative, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. The short summary is that if you were to have a driveway connection from the abutting property-- The, the short summary is that if you were to have a driveway connection from the abutting property to. The, uh, project site, you would have a limit of disturbance of approximately three acres. As it stands right now, the proposed project that we're looking at is. Has a limit of disturbance of approximately two and a half acres. So it would be an increase of half an acres more. Um, half an acre more of disturbance. Um, all right. And I believe. That's all I want to kind of go over for now, um. Like to hear what, uh, Sue may want to present, um, following her response to the, our, to our response to the peer review. And then, um, I'd like to speak to that a little bit more, if that's all right with the board.
Yes, of course. Thank you so much, Limhot. Um, Sue, I cannot see you on my screen, but, uh, I'll turn this over to you. If you want to just summarize some of your findings based on, um, the submittal.
Sure. Um, actually Limhot, if you would like to put up the alternate access. I'd like to just sort of address that and get that taken care of right up. If you could zoom in a little bit so they can see all the grading. So we had asked this as an alternative, um, if they were under the same ownership, it may not qualify as a limited project. Um, Bill and I both looked at this and a couple of key things here that we found is. The, the finer dash line further down. Is a vernal pool. So as you can see, there's a lot more disturbance directly tributary to the vernal pool. Vernal pools considered it outstanding resource water and that was a concern. Um, the other thing we noted that you can't see at this scale is they would have a retaining wall. Up against or just off of the lot line with the steel conservation land. And we felt that that gave a much greater visual impact from the conservation land and potentially the trees on the other side. So our office feels that they've addressed this. The board members may have other questions, but we felt that, um. Recommended that the fire chief comment on it, um, it's a more convoluted way for them to get into the new site. Um, and we felt that, um, they've shown that probably the wetlands crossing is the most viable, uh, access into the site. So, um. We did look at this, we looked at it in detail and we commented, most of the comments were directed more to conservation than planning. Because specifically of the resource areas being impacted. So, um. Limhot, if you would like to go back to the landscape plan?
Yes.
So many of our comments were taken care of. Um, we still have comments about cleaning up some of the notes. Making it clear that material can't be taken off the site. Cleaning up some of the erosion control, adding more temporary settling basins, things like that. But most of our comments, um, regarding landscaping were from Bill. What a surprise. But first of all, what we'd like to see is there's a scattering of information on multiple sheets. We'd like the landscape plan to be a complete landscape plan so they can give it to the landscape contractor. And that would include identifying the different surface treatments. Um, they've got wildflower mix in the uplands, they've got, um. Erosion control mix, but like up around the building, is that going to be bark mulch or is it going to be grass? We think it's appropriate to have it on one sheet. Um, the other things that we've commented on is if you could zoom out a little bit, please, Lim, um, Limhot. Is there's a large expanse without any shade trees because of the basin and the grading for the driveway. Um, Bill looked at it and he thought that they could put another six trees up. Adjacent to the parking lot to provide some shade to limit the heat island impact. Um, and we also wanted to see, um, because. They weren't sure what the retaining wall was going to be and it's 10 feet high, we asked for more. Um, screening at the toe of the wall. So if they ended up with just a simple concrete wall, it would be softened by the plantings. Um, the other thing that we defer to the board on is whether or not they feel there's sufficient screening from Mass Ave. I think we all stood where we're about a hundred feet between. Uh, the limit of the basin in Mass Ave and, and the board members could see through the trees. Bill and I talked about it and we thought you may want some more shade trees there. Um. It's true, the woods around it are heavily shaded, but once you get in on the site, the shade is diminished by all the grading. Um, so we felt that that's something that the board could give their feedback on and give them some clear guidance. As I went through my letter, there are a few things that we needed to have the board comment on. Uh, your regulations allow for the boards, board to determine whether or not they might want monitoring wells on the site. And we defer to the board. They have a plan, they picked where the rock crushing, rock crusher would be located. Limhot, if you could put that up. I think it was, yeah, there we go. So. They're proposing, they, they don't have an earth removal permit on this, so they're proposing to reuse the materials on site and crush the rocks. Uh, so that it can be used for fill on the site and I would assume for your road subbase. And potentially in the detention basin. Um, and we felt that that was important for them to show on the plan because, uh, is. The board learned from some of the other sites, the rock crusher can be loud and can have a lot of vibration. So we wanted to make sure that the board, uh, saw where it was being proposed and could make a conscious decision if that was sufficient. My other comments are just cleaning up a lot of the details and notes and making sure that by adding the additional landscape plan. That the appropriate notes go on the appropriate sheet. Uh, they had lighting proposed just on the building. We asked which one of the fixtures, it was the typical cut sheet that had, you know, four or five different fixtures. Um, we asked if they're going to have a sign out by the street. They said no sign and we felt that public safety wise, you need to have at least a street sign. So that if there was a problem EMS could get to it. Um, and the only other thing that just needs to be resolved is, um. There's a small amount of runoff from the driveway going into Mass Highway. Um, going to Mass Ave and we know Mass DOT doesn't want any water flowing onto their site. So Limhot and I talked about potentially him moving it and doing a small settling basin for it. Um, but other than that, most of the drainage was taken care of and. Like I said, many of the notes were more specific to the landscape plan because this is the first time we've had a full landscape plan. And, um, we just felt that it was appropriate to have. One plan and details to go to the landscape contractor rather than having to look through multiple sets of plans. To find the appropriate notes to get it as the board approves it. And that's a really quick summary of the comments we had.
Thank you so much, Sue. And, uh, tell Bill I owe him a cup of coffee for that. Thank you. Um, Limhot, do you want to respond to any of her comments or, or Bill's comments at this time? Before I, um, turn this over to board questions and comments?
Uh, yes, um, I actually have a PDF of the, uh, the responses here. Um, we had a chance to. To go through it a little bit, um, you know, we receive it Friday, so not too much time to actually. Um, write up a response, but you know, going, uh, going over the, um, the comments. Um, I feel as though, you know, I would love the chance to just talk through them because I don't think there are that many. Um, I'd love to get, you know, the board's take on some of these comments, just so we can have an idea of what we should provide. Um, so if that's all right, the board, I'd love to kind of go through some of these comments.
Um, I would just, um, ask that you try to keep it as brief as possible, knowing that the board has not seen, um. Sue's full comment yet, uh, and or this, uh, we, we'd love to give you whatever direction we can give you at this point. But we also have two more hearings to get through this evening. So.
Understood.
If you don't mind, just keeping it a bit concise, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Not a problem. Um. Alrighty, uh, the first comment to discuss is the temporary selling basin serves only a small portion of the site. We provided additional, uh, conveyant digits shown here to direct more water into the settling basin. Um, I believe the comment was made that, you know, however, the access drive, two to one driveway slope. Side slope as well as the other slope, which are lower than the infiltration basin directly contributory to the well and should have temporary selling areas as well. Um, we generally feel that the area that we're providing capture for, for the settling basin. Is a big chunk of the, the site already. Um, we generally feel that the remaining portion, um, should be sufficient with the erosion control that we have set up. You know, we're, we're taking a big chunk of the area out in terms of what could flow, flow down towards the erosion control. Um, you know, we believe is sufficient. Just wondering what the board thinks.
Uh, any comments from the board? Uh, I would generally defer to our town engineer for, um. For that personally.
Madam Chair, Bruce Ringwall.
Oh, sorry, Bruce. I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand raised.
It's okay. Um. As Hut said, the areas that Sue's talking about is between the proposed drive and the side slope. That goes down to the erosion control. And, you know, it's going to be a limited amount of area and especially if it's, uh, the, the, um, broken up rock. It's going to be accepting water into, uh, that area as well. Um. If there's an issue that arises, um, during construction, we have no problem putting an additional settling basin in. But to create a settling basin and disturb more area, it could be left vegetated. In our mind seems like, uh, a not, not the right maneuver. Um, at this point in time, we think we've got it well enough covered. And I think that we'd like to have the board interpret, um, there's been an awful lot of comments. This time around that weren't in the first time around in the review. And this is just keeping on going on and on and, and we'd like to, um, get to a point where we can have some conditions of approval. And, and move forward. So this is something that we would like to have these things addressed and not just how it'd be wide open to the BlueView engineer.
Sue, go ahead.
If I may just address that, my concern is, is that this, um. Interceptor swell will not capture the water coming down the driveway. And if it comes down the driveway, if we have a heavy rain like we've been having lately with the, or when it rains. Um, the intense rainfall is that washes directly out onto, um. Mass Ave. And to have a break in that slope to a small settling basin. You know, even before it crosses the culvert, just someplace so that. If we have a heavy rainfall and they've got it rough graded, it all does not end up down on Mass Ave or in the wetlands.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Bruce, go ahead.
This is a, a set of permitting plans, um, not full construction drawings. Um, we've worked with our contractors in the past. If you have a long driveway like this, it slopes down. We set up essentially, um. Diversion berms on the drive. Um, they can be set up most of the way down and still go into the, the basin that's going to be used as a temporary basin, the big one that's hatched out there. Um, and catch the majority of that drive into that. There'll only be a small amount left and that can be set across into one side of the other, into small areas as well. So there's room in places to deal with that. It doesn't all have to be ironed out on a, uh, on a permitting plan. Um, Sue's office and our office, when we're doing stuff for people, our job is to permit the plan, not to do ways and means. Uh, means and methods of the contractor that gets the job. We're there to help guide them. And to make certain that the decision of the board and the conservation commission are upheld. And that there's no issues with erosion, but to, you know, iron out all kinds of what ifs. Is, um, I think in my mind, a step beyond where we're at at this point.
Are there any other board comments at this time? Regarding this specifically, yes. Cindy, go ahead.
Oh, um, yeah, I mean, I think, uh, you know, I would certainly defer to, uh, the town's consulting engineer on what she recommends. And perhaps we, when we get to the point of conditioning, you know, perhaps there's some. Uh, wording that we can put in, uh, you know, that doesn't hold this up. But it is our job and our consulting engineer's job to ensure that the drainage works and that is a requirement of site plan approval. So, you know, we all need to feel comfortable, um, that, that the drainage is, uh, is designed properly. So I would certainly defer to our town engineer, uh, on her recommendations. Uh, and generally I just wanted to say, you know, thank you, uh, Limhot for the sidewalk. It was very, very helpful. It is a very challenging site to develop. Um. I appreciate that you took a hard look at the alternatives analysis. I was also, um. Comfortable, w- 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 along with Steve's, uh, Steve Jeffrey's ask that you do that. Um, because the access from Route 111 is fairly substantial. I, I believe I saw it's a 75 foot wide apron, um.
Cindy, can I interrupt just for a second? I, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be rude, but I just want to make sure that, um, Limhot has, uh, clear direction. So if Chris or Rich want to say anything regarding, uh, site drainage, um, that this one question, I'd like to. Uh, make sure that we tie a bow on that.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna rely, I mean, I, you know, we didn't have, I didn't have this before, but like now that we're hearing it, I'm gonna rely on Sue on. When it comes to site drainage, I have other concerns that you're not at, you know, we're not talking about yet, but.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Rich. Um, Chris, are you in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Terrific. Cindy, please carry on.
Yeah, sorry. I'll, I'll try and just be brief. Anyway, I was surprised that it was a 75 foot wide apron at Mass Ave. Um, I believe Limhot was going to, uh, or maybe has already spoken to. Mass DOT because I believe those trees at the beginning of the entrance, very, two very significant. Trees are under their jurisdiction. Um, this is going to be a very visually impactful project. Um, I probably would defer to Rebecca and others on the landscaping, but there's a lot of grading and a lot of. There's a 10 foot retaining wall that they're proposing to screen. This will be visi- uh, visible from the trail behind it. I, I think Limhot did a good job explaining. How high the roof line will be from the trail. Um, but, um, I guess I, I generally have concerns about the amount of impact. I know the alternatives coming through the other lot. Sounds like it's got more, uh, land impact, but I, I think we might want to look at that a little more closely. Um, but this will be very visible, more so than the adjoining property. This will be very visible from Route 111 and, uh. I, I do have some concerns about that and I don't know whether the screening that they're proposing will be sufficient, but, um, you know. Those are my main concerns. We do have an obligation on the Route 111, uh, viewing tree protection under our site plan rules and regulations. To pay attention to that. Um, and, uh, you know, that whole section of, of Route 111 is. To be at least considered, um, and the amount of clearing that's going to concern will very much change at the view shed. Uh, along 111. So I just wanted to call that out. Thanks.
Thanks, Cindy. Um, Limhot, I want to go back to you and just make sure we're giving and, uh, providing you all of the clarity that you need. Uh, in order to keep you moving forward. So if you want to, um, kind of pick up on the, the items that you needed clarification from the board on, um.
Uh, yes, certainly.
Thank you.
Um, jumping to the, the next, uh, item is, uh, plan is, plans do not show where de-watering sum will be located while. The cover is under construction. Um, I think I'll just try to echo what Bruce said about means and method. Um, they're looking to install a covert that has a four foot footing, a four foot, a footing that goes down four feet. Um, we know that the watering will be needed, um, in terms of where exactly the location to place the sum. Um, you know, we can't show it on the plan and have them follow it to the T. Um. You know, i- it just seems like something that they can figure out during construction. It's not something that we can necessarily have to show on the plan.
Uh, thank you. I, I am hearing from the board that we will be relying on our, um, site engineer for this. Thank you. Go ahead, Sue.
That, that comment is probably more for conservation because typically they'll do a de-watering trench five to 10 feet. That upstream from where the culvert is, which is just a temporary alteration of wetlands. And that's why it's flagged out so that the limit of work reflects the fact that they will be digging. Typically what they do is they dig a hole, put a vertical pipe, pack it with stone and that's what they, they drop their some, their pump in to de-water. And that's probably more conservation than planning, but it does get, should be reflected in the limit of work.
Thank you, Sue. Okay, Limhot, go ahead.
Jumping to the next item, um, seed mix should be shown on the landscaping plan. I believe one of the comments further down talks about how these landscaping plans should be part of the whole, uh, site plan set. Which we are planning to incorporate. I believe if we incorporate that landscaping plan to be as part of the, the entire plan set. Um, you know, it, it would make reference to the seed mix on sheet C2, which is on the notes. Not necessarily having to show it again, I guess.
Sue, did you have another comment regarding, oh, sorry to saw you take your hand down. Um. Generally, as this, uh, landscape architect, I would say all of the planting materials is on a landscape plan. Um, and, and I do generally agree with, with. And I do generally agree with Sue and Bill's comments about making an actual landscape set, right? We would typically have a planting plan, which would have all the schedules on it and sizing and types of plants, all the seed mixes, the shrubs, all of that stuff would be on that one landscape plan. Then you'd have your details on another sheet. You'd have a lighting plan with specifications proposed as well as another sheet. So I think it's a little bit challenging when you have to go and reference back to other sheets. I guess one other thing I was going to say is that trees, now that we have a landscape architect onboarded, trees should not be showing up in two different places anymore. They should be strictly on the landscape plan and not show up on any of the civil plans. Because just going through the set, I noticed some contradictions happening already between the two. And it would be best, you know, to eliminate any contradictions between the two fields.
Understood. I appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Is John part of your team, John Kivlin?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chairperson, John Kivlin is the chief of the Boxborough Fire Department.
Oh, my goodness, John, apologize. I guess I would look for Chief Kivlin on this one. Chief, please go ahead if you wanted to weigh in on one of these items. I appreciate your feedback. Can he be unmuted?
Uh, yes, Chief, you should be able to unmute yourself if, at this point, if you want to weigh in. Perhaps he had to step away. I will get in touch with him behind the scenes.
Okay, thank you very much. Lim Hut, let's go forward with the rest of your questions. And if he, he's able to unmute again, then we'll get his, his comment.
Okay. Jumping to the next one, recommend, we recommend that these lines be shown on the cover detail to make clear that these lines are going underneath the footing, indicate the offset from the conduit to the bottom of the footing. I guess if we're following, we're just following Sue's recommendation, this can be added to the detail. Not a problem. To jump into the next one, regarding the construction fencing as well as a lockbox for the fire department during construction period. Generally speaking, you know, I don't see the need for the site to be locked up. And we'll have onsite contractor there every day during construction period. So I'm not sure where the board, how the board view this comment.
Sue, your concern about the gate.
It was as much that they were going to be doing blasting and they'd have a rock face for a while as they were working the site. And just to keep anybody from getting in there and getting hurt.
So it's more of a construction.
Just for construction, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that could, would Lim Hut like respond to that, I guess, if it's specific just to construction. I mean, that's most fence, most, most construction sites while under construction would be fenced off, right? From a safety perspective, is that, you know.
Correct. Correct, and the contractor would establish that location and take care of it. We pass on the word that you want to, we want to have enough room for emergency vehicles to get onto the site so that they can open the gate, whether it's locked or unlocked. The site next door, when it was done a number of years ago, was blasted and everything was well maintained. Fire Department, the then fire chief and everybody did not have any problem with the work that was done.
Thank you, Bruce. Sue, you're just asking for a construction site fence through here. And it should have a lockbox for the fire department.
If it's locked, it needs a, the fire department needs to be able to get in there. You know, my concern was you're close to the Steel Farm, the Steel Farm Conservation Land. If kids got in there just so that they can't come in from Mass Ave, yet the fire department could get in if needed.
One other question is, is there a concern, you know, I think that there, you know, there's safety issues from the trail side too.
You're having a fence up there already.
So that's the tree protection fencing, okay, so you're confident about that?
Yeah.
Terrific, okay. Okay, so board members have any comments or thoughts about that? Or are we also deferring to our civil engineer for that recommendation? Okay, thank you. Oh, Cindy Markowitz, go ahead.
Yeah, Rebecca, this looks like a pretty substantive letter. And I know I'd like to really read through it and have the plans in front of me to understand it. So it's, I appreciate that you're asking them to identify any issues, you know, and to, so that we can kind of move this along. But I'm a little concerned this letter is fairly substantive and I'm not sure we're gonna be able to get through it all in a productive way. So I just don't know if we can either continue this to later in the evening or to a future date because we haven't even had a chance to read this letter yet, so just a suggestion.
Cindy, part of that is because I left my, if things were addressed, I put addressed and that just made it seem long. But I just wanted to make it clear that they had addressed the issues. So I kept the same order that we had in our previous letter.
Is the red, the places comments or the red is the?
The red is our new comment.
Okay, all right, sorry, I guess I have, now I'm getting confused, but okay.
Cindy, I agree with you generally. I think, I just want to make sure that if there's like two items left on Lim Hut's like list that he needs clarity on, knowing that we're going to defer to places on these items. That's the tone of the board right now. You know, I think I'd just love to just give him the right direction coming out of this meeting. If there's only in fact, one or two things, I do not want to go through everything on this because we haven't had a chance to absorb it. Rich, please go ahead.
Yeah, I think you're there. Like, I just want to know, like, what does, what does the applicant need from this board? And I generally am not a fan of trying to move things along, but we do have a huge agenda tonight. And we just got this information. So like, I can't provide, you know, in-depth assessment. I'm gonna rely on Sue on a lot of that. But if there's a specific like directional question that Lim Hut you have or, you know, the applicant has, please state it and then I think we're gonna have to take this up in the future.
May I make a suggestion, Madam Chair?
Bruce, please let me call on you first, if you would mind. Everybody raises their hand and I'll give you your chance to go and talk. So yes, please, Bruce, go ahead.
How about if Lim Hut and Sue and I have a conversation offline? And then we can hopefully whip through a lot of this much quicker unless Lim Hut's got something. But I think that we've heard that you want to lean towards what your consultant has to say. So we can probably address all this offline much quicker.
I appreciate that very much. Thank you so much. Yeah, there seems to be a fair amount in this, this red line. And I know that the board really does appreciate the, you know, ability to dig through it a little bit deeper. So we can give you some really, you know, decent guidance. So Alec, go ahead.
Yes, Madam Chairperson, so I did just want to once again apologize to the board that you didn't get this letter in advance and apologize in the same regard to the applicant here. Given the applicant's offer here to take this offline and work with the consulting engineer, what I would further recommend is that the board do ask that we start preparing a draft decision on this application so we can start taking tangible steps forward. If Sue and the applicant's engineer can connect between now and let's say, let's call it August 29th, we could have feedback back to you by the week of, let's call it September 5th. And that would give between the consulting engineer, places associates and myself, that would give us a week to prepare a draft decision for the board to start picking a way out and making conscious edits to at the upcoming meeting on September 15th.
Thank you, Alec. I just, I want to just caution about jumping forward too quickly until the board is ready to make such a move. So, but yes, taking this offline and trying to get through it, I think is an excellent idea, make it go faster. Rich, go ahead.
Yeah, just real quickly, I heard Alec talk about a draft decision, which I'm all for moving things forward. You know, we haven't talked about like what some of the big items are. We just been dealing in the noise here. I do have a, still a continued question around the Vista from Steel Farm. I understand there's a huge tree layer in between, but I still haven't gotten my head around the elevations and what all that means. So there, and there's a lot of grading on this site, like, so I think there's still some fundamental questions we have to talk through. I just, you know, we, those are things we can talk about, but I think we, we're gonna have to talk, we're not gonna be able to talk about them tonight. But if there's more information that certainly the applicant can provide on the elevations, particularly from, you know, this is a budding Steel Farm from that hill, that would be helpful.
You know, I went back and I double checked my notes. I know you and I talked about this, but it's, they're both at the same exact elevation, 364 is what I saw. But Lim Hut, do you want to respond to Rich's comment or question there?
Yes, and I'll, I'll, you know, confirm what Rebecca said. I did go back to check myself after that sidewalk. It is at a similar elevation. And as we saw during the sidewalk itself, you know, the trees that are located on the budding land, on the townsland on the trail, they are up, you know, 60 to 80 feet high. So with the new building that's going in, we're shaving down 15 feet into the existing grade to site this building. So it's only about 15 feet higher than the grade if you're standing on the trail side. So 15 feet up from the ground versus the 60 foot, 80 foot tall trees throughout the trail end. I believe that is sufficient screening to Steel Farm.
Lim Hut, I'm sorry, you said the, what was the elevation of the, did you have the base of the building of the house at Steel Farm or the roof? What elevation did you give me?
So if you're standing on the trail, looking at the highest peak of the proposed building, the elevation difference is approximately 15 feet higher.
Yep, I got that. I'm sorry, the Steel Farm building.
Oh. Um, that one I have to check. I only looked at the, probably what Rebecca looked at, which is the base elevation on the town GIS map. It shows a very similar base elevation between that, the Steel Farm area versus our project site at the peak.
Okay, so that's kind of what I'm getting at is we're talking about very generalities, but like, you know, 20 feet might matter. Might not with the tree canopy, but.
Lim Hut, can you please follow up with the board on that information?
Yes.
That'd be perfect. Thank you very much. Rich, I'd like to just let you finish any additional comments that you have here. You're all set? Okay, Cindy, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I might suggest that the board also submit written comments to Alec, just also help speed things along. But I did ask Lim Hut when we were out in the field whether that would consider a flat roof instead of a peaked roof to help lower some of the elevation. And then I would also like the applicant to respond to section 4.5. The sub items within that, which is Route 111 view and tree protection items. Because I do think that's applicable in this case and I didn't see a lot of that addressed in the application to date. So I would like the applicant to include some specifics on, under section 4.5 of our site plan rules and regulations. Thanks.
Okay.
Thanks Cindy.
Very quick, I did want to point out that I did stop by DPW to try to speak with the tree warden regarding the shade tree requirements. He stated that because those trees are located within the state's right of way, a shade tree is not applicable to, they can't be considered as shade trees per section 4.5.
Just to follow up, there are several other items under that section with regard to identifying trees with a diameter of 15 DBH and some visuals and protection of the tree canopy and such. So I think there's more to address there, but at least that's what I would like to see. Thank you.
Madam Chairperson?
Yes, go ahead, Alec.
Sorry to cut in here. Lim Hut, too, I would just recommend contacting District 3, the Mast DOT district about that. I just want to confirm that they don't have a process for shade trees within their right of way. I don't want that to catch you on the back end and potentially have you remove a tree and have the state contradict Ed on that statement. But we can provide you with that contact information offline.
Not a problem, I have a contact I can reach out to. Thank you.
Thank you. We have historically on a very close property gone through this process with identifying the, you know, trees that are 15 inches or larger. And then it provides, we need a tree protection plan and I'm sure you're familiar with all of that. But just have another look at that. So I think this would apply as well, in my opinion. Cindy, did you have any other comments or were you all set?
As I said, I'd like to, after I reviewed Sue's response letter and, you know, be able to submit any additional questions in writing to the town planner.
Yeah, you stated, thank you. Thank you. Chris Doughty, did you have any comments?
Yeah, nothing really beyond, but we were already touching on.
Okay, terrific, thank you. Lim Hut, if you responded to this already, I've, you know, please forgive me. But were there, did you meet with ConsCom to review stuff again in between our last meeting and now? Were there any additional findings? Or I know that you had a member of this onsite, but were there any findings from ConsCom?
No, we have not gone back to conservation. I believe the next available meeting we're scheduled for is on the 3rd.
Okay, terrific, thank you. We talked about, let's see, we talked about all of this so far. There was some correspondence between the fire department and yourself. Let's see, and I guess Cindy, you started, you brought this up too. There was, but there was a response about the opening being 72 feet wide. And I can't really recall what is next door, but I know that exceeded the distance that is allowable as well. So I guess that it just came off as absolutely massive. So I was curious what the reasoning is for 72 feet wide.
Similar to, I guess, our most recent project, Mast DOT District 3, we had a site where the latest requirement that we received directive for is that you must be able to turn a vehicle, WB60 vehicle, which is, you know, a large commercial trailer truck into a site, a new commercial site. So we ended up providing a flare radius, I just want to check this real quick. Flare radius of 25 feet. So it is an opening of 24 feet for the actual width of the driveway pavement at the property line. But it flares out to a radius of 25 feet on each side, thus creating this 70 foot opening for the actual curb cut.
Hey, Sue, can you speak at all to that for us? I know that we've, we've dealt with this before, I guess.
That's very similar to other commercial sites with a 24 foot wide road. I thought this was a 20 foot driveway, but given the speed of 40 miles an hour, I think it's appropriate so that a truck can pull in in a single smooth movement and not have to slow down to really crank the wheel to make a tight turn. And I believe that's the thought process between Mast Dot with their requirements.
Thank you for your input. So that has to, Lim Hut, you have to speak to Mast DOT to confirm this item, is that correct? Is that what the process is or?
Yes, that is correct. But generally flare radius of 25 feet is what they're, they're looking for. As kind of like a rule of thumb, going for a commercial property.
Okay, thank you.
It may actually be a little bit wider because if you remember, there was a cut that they'd have to go down to get onto the pavement of Mass Ave. So it'll actually have a little bit wider for grading, but the pavement would, would be that, just where the pavement's matched.
Thank you. Lighting fixtures, I think Sue, you brought this up. I did see that they're dark sky compliant, which is excellent. Do, is there any site lighting, I guess, is one of my questions. And then that leads me, and if there is, I'd love to see that in the, a plan as well. Signage, I know that there's a statement that there's none anticipated. But again, I feel like, yeah, you need signage out there. So if there's signage, we'd like to know what the lighting is going to be on that as well. I think we might have a. Um, I think we might have a requirement to show what the sign looks like to um, uh, in our um. Plan uh, regulations, but is, are you confirming that, Sue?
Yeah, I, I, my thought was at least show that if you wanna put up a, a, one that says nine seventy-five Mass Ave. Just show it so that it's clear that it's back far enough not to impede site distances on one eleven.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay. If I could speak to that for a second, um, I, I do wanna point out, um, I believe the applicant is planning on putting a similar. Uh, rural mailbox, uh, similar to the one that he has on eight-eight-one Mass Ave. Um, it's just a rural mailbox on some granite posts, and it just has the uh, the, the street number on it. Not necessarily a sign, but it's just a, a mailbox that identifies the uh, the project, I mean, the, the site itself.
So for the record, if you wanted to provide that as a precedent image and um, and uh, you know, submit it to the board with a, with a location. You know, that might get you around where, you know, where we need to be.
Okay. I also wanna just briefly touch upon the uh, the lighting. Um, we provided a light fixture. It, it's just a cut sheet, it's single fixture. We're not planning to provide additional lighting for the driveway. It's just gonna be wall-mounted light for the, the actual building. The, you know, the, I believe the um, the light candle associated with these fixtures only goes up to about thirty-five feet at a maximum. So they're not shining onto the budding property, and it is a, a, you know, a dark sky compliant, like you said. Um, and that's really, really all we're proposing.
Okay, um, just, just with the, the height of the building and the, the, the height of the location of this. Those lights are gonna be relatively high and from uh, neighboring parcels, I think, very visible. So I did appreciate that they are um, automatic shut-off and, and also dimmable. Um, but they could be pretty visible from, you know, we have a residence on one side, and then we have um, yeah, neighbors, obviously, on Mass Ave. That um, would be looking potentially up into these fixtures. Let's see, um. Yes, we talked about the, the planting plan. You're gonna go ahead and make the, uh, the changes that we have discussed. And, and make it a proper um, planting set, I guess, that, you know, may or may not be in, inserted into your overall set. So I think we got through those comments. And then you were going to add some uh, plantings to the bottom of that wall. You said that those have not been wrapped up in there, so thank you. Um, and then I just gotta pull up my plan comments. Um, I noted that you have tree protection on uh, the area that's flanking along um, the, the town on land. Uh, but what is the tree protection for the areas that are not getting cleared? The areas that are supposed to be protected and um, and maintained uh, for the existing trees. Um, I'm just tossing that question out to you, because when I see a construction site, I would have um, you know, any trees to remain. In reality, should have some fencing around them. Uh, so what is the deterrent, my question to you, what is the deterrent to keep people from? Uh, moving and damaging more than what's out there on site. As proposed, if that makes sense.
So I, once construction start, we'll obviously stake out the erosion control barrier. And kinda set the limit of work where, where we're showing it. I, I guess, you know, if somebody really wants to, uh, they can get to the trees beyond that. But there's no incentive to cut down additional trees if it's not necessary to, to do so.
I, I'm not suggesting cutting down trees. I just know how things move around on a construction site, so that's, that's my concern. Sue, I'm seeing your hand up. Are you comfortable as proposed with the erosion control? Being a barrier?
I, I think I'm fine with it, but if there's a major tree just on the edge of the erosion control. Or one where the erosion control can be pulled in tighter to save a major tree, I'd like to see that happen. Um, we don't really know where the major trees are along here, and the erosion control barriers set. Back from the toe of um, grading. So if we can save a tree, I say, you know, let's see what we can do.
Would that be something we could condition in, Sue, that you uh, or, and or Bill go out and just kind of uh, review before construction?
I think it could just be a note added to the plan, that the edge, the erosion control barrier is uh, maybe flexible. If at all possible to save major trees. It's simple enough as a note.
Point of order, point of order. Are, are we getting into conditions now? I thought we were gonna kinda.
I was just asking about how the trees are being protected. Um, so. And I'm asking if Sue is comfortable with the proposal as it's shown.
Yeah, they could do a note.
Yeah, not setting conditions. I just, I would like to feel comfortable that construction stays to the edge of um, proposed clearing. Um, okay, uh. I just have a couple more things. Uh, the wall materiality was brought up on site. Um, do we have an answer for that at this point?
Uh, not at this point, I don't believe.
Okay, um, will you be able to share that with the board?
Um, yes, we can find that out for the next meeting.
Great, thank you. And then my last um, comment, I think, was um. Uh, potential rock crushing on site, and if there's any way that, that, that can be somehow mitigated from a sound perspective. Cause I'm, I'm being mindful of um, some residential um, properties uh, in very close proximity to this.
Um, well, the, I believe the nearest point of our limited clearing to the budding. House uh, on the west of the property is approximately seven hundred feet away. And we are citing the crushing location on the east side of the property. Um, so you know, a distance probably closer to about nine hundred to a thousand feet away. Um, we generally feel that is far enough for. For noise screening.
Sometimes we've done sound attenuation, like fencing around, like where this is happening, so I'm just tossing that out as a, as a possible thought. To consider, because um, that's not a nice sound. Um, uh, I just have one more question that I didn't actually see, the, regarding the light fixtures. Um, can, can you uh, just kind of identify the height on the building that those are? I know you, you provided a um, precedent image. Um, is that accurate to what you anticipate on this particular building?
Sorry, let me just pull up the uh, profile real quick.
Sure.
So, um. I think I mentioned that the, from the peak of the uh, roof of the proposed building to the base is approximately thirty feet. But if you're looking at the corner of the building, uh, to the base uh, of the building is only approximately twenty-one feet. Uh, I would assume that the light fixture would be placed somewhere, um, you know, relatively close to that, that corner peak is. So about eighteen to twenty feet high.
Okay.
Um, again, because we're shaving down the building, we're shaving down the existing grade approximately fifteen feet, you know, in comparison to the trail. That light fixture will only be vertically about five, six feet higher.
Thank you. Um, and then um, you know, I, I, I would be in agreement with um, places. Recommendation to add some more plants out here. Uh, we're, we're removing about two and a half acres. And I do really believe that um, based on the sidewalk, that this is gonna be a very highly visible um, property. Um, so I would love to just, you know, uh, press your landscape architect to um, try to help mitigate screening from. From the street, um, specifically on this one, especially with that big opening on the um, the roadway. Uh, and whatever we can do to protect from the lighting, but I think those trees at the top of the um, uh, wall will help do that a bit too. Um, okay, uh, Rich, go ahead. Oh, Sue, I'm sorry. Did you have a response to anything I just said before I moved to?
Yes, I, I just had a quick comment on the mailboxes. Limhut, you said there'd be similar to eight-eight-one. And you'd have, that's where they'd know the um, address. Um, can you please make sure it shows on the plans? Cause that'll affect Conservation Commission. It'll affect your grading, may affect additional trees, and it, uh, Mass Dot also needs to know that there's a pull-off for the mail truck. Um, and then on the lights, my comment was, is that there's, uh, this cut sheet says twenty watt, thirty watt, forty watt. Uh, lumens are twenty-eight, twenty to fifty-six, forty, just to identify which ones you're proposing. Cause it, it shows a, a variation, and just say which one you want, circle it, whatever, highlight, whatever, so we know.
Thank you, Sue. Uh, Rich, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I'd like to motion that we continue this public hearing to a date that uh, the applicant would find acceptable.
Do a second. Um, do we want to um, put a date specific?
So your motion must stipulate a specific date, because our written continuation will further have to stipulate that date and time. Um, Bruce, um, Bruce or Limhut, I'll ask you in representing your client on the call. Um, uh, is September fifteenth uh, at seven?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, yeah.
Yes, September fifteenth at seven thirty-five PM, acceptable, and in interim, we'll get that uh, that offline call with our engineering team.
Public hearing with Campanelli at seven oh five, and we're gonna spend a good hour and a half with them, probably, right?
That's correct. We would do ours typical, schedule them in thirty-minute increments. I would assume we would spend an hour to an hour and a half with Campanelli. And then an hour, an hour and a half to, with, with this applicant.
Fair with the time, so I'll motion that we move to this hearing to September fifteenth, to begin at eight fifteen.
Second. Second. Okay, moved by Rich, seconded by Cindy. Um, any discussion? Did I get that right? Who seconded? I, I heard Cindy.
I, Cindy and I both did at the same time. It's fine, I don't care.
Thanks. Um, any discussion on that? Uh, Rich, go ahead.
Cause already I.
Oh, oh, uh, before we do that, I'm asking for discussion, any discussion. My only comment is the reason we've been spacing them out kinda close together like that. Is because if somebody doesn't show up for some reason, or something gets pushed. Um, you know, if we get, if somebody asks for it to be continued to the next hearing, then we're able to open the hearing. Uh, versus waiting, um, you know, longer to, to open the hearing. So that's the only reason we've been pushing the meetings together just a little bit to eliminate um, any potential drops in our calendar. Um, so with that, uh, we got a motion on the table. Um, and so I will take a roll call for eight fifteen. On the fifteenth of September. Uh, Chris, I'm seeing you first.
Uh, Doughty I.
Uh, Cindy?
Mark Witz I.
Thanks. Um, Rich?
Cause already I.
Thank you, and Burner I. Um, thank you all. Um, thank you, Limhut, um, for joining us, and um, and Bruce, thank you. Um, and we will continue the fifteenth. We'll see you then.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Have a good evening, Sue.
Okay, thank, you don't need me for anything else, do you?
Okay, you can stay, but you could probably get out.
Good, thank you.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. All right, terrific. Um, okay, let me pull up my papers again.
Uh, Madam Chairperson?
Yes.
If I could, I'll just note, I have contacted our consultant on your final public hearing, and I have alerted him that we're running late. So if you need to take additional time to this hearing, he is aware.
Okay, thank you for that, Alec. Um, and one quick question, um, I did not see our chief return to the um, meeting. Uh, can you please encourage him, tell him we saw him, but um, encourage him to put something into writing if he had a comment to share with the, the board?
Yes, will do. Thank you.
You. Um, so, okay, we're continuing the public hearing now at this time for municipal uses. Uh, the Boxborough Planning Board will continue a public hearing pursuant uh, to MGL Chapter Forty A, uh, Section Five. To consider the following proposed zoning by law amendments. A general municipal use code and/or individual uses customarily operated by a municipality. Um, okay, so uh, we've gotten lots and lots of, of public uh, comment, which has been fantastic. Um, since our last uh, public hearing. Uh, all of that is accessible in the board's pa, uh, packet. So um, you can, you can access it there. Um, so uh, before we go ahead and um, I'm gonna open this up to a public comment. Uh, right off the bat, um, but I would like to just um, you know, try to again, uh, limit time on this as much as we can. Uh, but thoughtfully get through everybody's uh, questions and comments. The board does still need some time to um, get some uh, some work done on this thing. Uh, we're trying very aggressively to get through, um, and hopefully get this on our um, town ATM. Uh, so uh.
Uh, point of, point of order, Rebecca and Mark White, rejoin the meeting.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Um, before we go ahead and do this, oh, uh, open this up to uh, public comment. I would, um, let's see, at our, we had a, our joint meeting back in June, um, I wanted to ask if uh, the Select Board. Or if Michael Johns is here, or if um, the Fire uh, Building Committee is here, if any of them can speak to the three parcels. That were um, in question, uh, so that we can have that information going into our discussions. Uh, one was thirteen hundred Mass Ave, one was eight-three-two Mass Ave, and one was fourteen-fourteen Mass Ave. So if there's somebody that can um, speak specifically to that for the board, uh, I know there was a meeting on August fourteenth, I believe. Um, and we haven't heard um, what the turnout was on that.
Uh, Mike, can you, it, it, can you, I was away for that meeting, and I can't find that. I believe no parcels were taken off of our list, so all three of the parcels you listed are still on our list. We prioritize them, and two out of the three, the thirteen hundred and the eight-thirty-two are on our high priority. Um, but the fourteen hundred still remains on the list.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that, Mary. Thank you. Um, okay, so at this point, um, if the public has comments to make. Um, please raise your hand, uh, using the Zoom function, or if you're calling in by phone, um, star nine will work as well. Uh, Mary, go ahead, you're first.
Okay.
Say your name and your address, if you could.
Yes, I am Mary Brolin. I'm at one fifty-three Guggins Lane. And at this point, I'm speaking as the Chair of the Fire Station Building Committee. At our meeting on August fourteenth, the committee voted um, a letter to send to the Planning Board, and I'd like to read that. Um, to the Boxborough Planning Board, the members of the Fire Station Building Committee would like to thank the members of the Planning Board for all of your work. On zoning related to public safety buildings, including our tri-board meeting held on June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. And the public hearings you have held and will hold in August of twenty twenty-five in preparation for a zoning article at the October Special Town Meeting. From the hearing and your other meetings, we understand that you were exploring different options to address the zoning issue in town. Based on the discussion we heard, the input from community members, and the need to allow for flexibility in selecting. An appropriate and cost-effective site for the new fire station. The Fire Station Building Committee recommends that the Planning Board put forward a zoning amendment. That allows for facilities for public safety purposes, including structures used for police, fire. Emergency medical services and emergency management be permitted by right in all zoning districts within the town of Boxborough. Thank you for your consideration of this recommendation. It was voted unanimously by the committee. And we are still collecting two signatures. You'll receive the signed letter soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Uh, Suresh? Can we um, please, Cindy, unmute?
Suresh should be able to unmute himself, I've also prompted it.
Yeah. Uh, if you could say your name and your um, address, please.
Yes, this is Suresh Jastusariya. Uh, I, I live on Blanchard Road, one fifteen Blanchard Road. In Boxborough, uh, and I've been uh, here for almost twenty-five years. Uh, first thing I wanted to say was that, um, you know, in all my twenty-five years here, I found that the. The zoning uh, board members, uh, planning members, uh, as well as uh, uh, public servants to the town. Uh, have been very, very uh, judicious in their choices. And uh, we elected them, and we should put some trust in them, that they are making the right choice. And if they don't, we have recourse, you know, we have, uh, we can come back and uh, you know, examine their decisions one more time. And based on this faith, uh, I would like to say that uh, uh, for public safety. Uh, my choice would be that we should allow the uh, the zoning to be anywhere in town. And uh, you know, I was, I've been listening to these conversations for the, uh, this meeting. Uh, for last one hour, as well as I was also in the past one. Uh, all the discussions leaves me to believe that uh, you know. All the discussions leads me to believe that, you know, the selection committee has taken a lot of pain to address a lot of issues, just like it was their own, you know, fire station in their own town, you know, which which it is, right? So I don't see any reason not to trust the judgment of the folks. At the end of the day, it will be the judgment, you know. You can micromanage them as much as you want, but at the end, it's going to be their judgment which we have to trust. Thank you.
Thank you. Lakshmi, if you could state your name and your address, please.
This is D R Money. I'm just using Lakshmi's computer, two sixty-one Burrows Road. So I think we all agree that the town desperately needs an updated fire station, which is for the best interest of all residents of the town. We have had several of these public meetings to discuss the fire station. I think the representation and opinions in these meetings may not accurately represent the town as a whole. So I think the Planning Board should not decide whether to put this to vote or not based on just opinions expressed here. I think we should bring it to vote in town meeting and let the town as a whole decide on this issue. And to the degree possible, I think we should let all options stay open. But I think we should definitely just let the town as a whole decide where we should go. Thank you.
Thank you. Les Fox, if you could state your name and address, please.
Yes, thank you, Rebecca. Les Fox, one eighty-seven Hill Road. Rebecca, I actually sent in two comments, written comments to the Planning Board. One on July twenty-second and to be available by the deadline of July thirty-first for comments for the August fourth hearing. That was provided by a deliberation by the Water Resources Committee, which had a special meeting just so we could do that and meet the deadline. I'd like to, if I could, read that tonight, but I'd also like to read my own personal input on the specific topic of public safety zoning. So may I do that?
Les, I just, we we are tight for schedule today, and so I don't want to create a precedent for this tonight. We've read one letter.
I want to, I want to point out that the letter I sent most recently is not in your packet, okay?
Yeah, that's, I'm not aware of that at all.
It's not in your packet.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. I'm sure Alec is going to take care of that now. I'm just finishing my statement. I wasn't done, but I'm willing to let you read this this note, especially if it was not in the packet for any reason. That would be a mistake. But I just, I don't want to set a precedent where everyone is reading the correspondence that has come in because it will take us until ten o'clock and we have one more hearing after this. But if you hadn't read that that note that you said was not included, I'd like to hear it.
Yes, I don't know for sure whether the other one was included or not or was read or not. But let me start with the most recent one, which I sent on August eighth. This is from me personally, not a committee. There has recently been talk of proposing a zoning overlay district for public safety facilities and operations. Obviously, there are many factors to be considered, but I support this concept that deserves serious consideration. As a governmental use case, it would be perfectly consistent with the longstanding historic use table. We do not personally know where the future growth will occur in Boxborough, neither residential nor commercial. Consequently, prudence and good planning suggests public safety facilities should be allowed by right in all districts. This would not mean that actual facilities would be built in all cases. Acceptable locations would be determined by evaluation of all the issues, pros and cons, and trade-offs through public input via the normal site plan review process. Let's make the aperture as wide as possible and filter later. Town meeting needs the flexibility to arrive at the best overall solution. Thank you.
Madam Chairperson? I do just want to correct for the record. This letter was placed into the board's packet for your August eleventh meeting and it remains in your packet today.
Thank you.
This is not an online version. I saw it today.
I'll I'll share with you the location of it, Les, but yes.
I have it downloaded on my computer. I'll show you the file.
Okay, just to keep things moving forward. Thank you, Les. I appreciate it. Punitha, if you'd like to state your name and your address, please.
Hi, I'm Punitha Natarajan and I live at fifty-nine Codman Hill Road. And my choice or recommendation for this is I feel that the town should be allowed to build public safety buildings anywhere in the town. And I'm also okay if it comes to vote in the town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Ishan, if you'd like to state your name and address and give us your comment.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ishan Verma. I live at one hundred sixty Depot Road. I'm just here to give a little bit of a younger perspective here as, you know, a young person who lives in this town of Boxborough. I think just moving forward to the future, offering the town as much flexibility as possible when it comes to building these buildings that are incredibly important to our safety is the most important thing. I think more than anything, putting restrictions on where we can put our emergency buildings is silly. I think making sure that we can put them where they're most needed is incredibly important. So I would support zoning public safety separately and making sure that it is, that public safety is restricted to police and fire, but creating a new zoning category for public safety. And then I'm okay if it comes to vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ishan. Gary Kushner, state your name and your address, please.
Hello, everyone. Gary Kushner, one fifty-eight Flag Hill Road in Boxborough, obviously. I wanted to first of all express my support for what the Planning Board is looking to do with the overlay. I have to admit, I'm still disappointed that the Planning Board wasn't a unanimous decision at, you know, at the A T M for all government items. But I think we need to go forward and I'd like to again express my support behind the overlay of public safety everywhere in town. So hopefully, Planning Board will, you know, go in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. And if you could state your name and address, please.
Yep, Anne McNeese, two ninety-seven Stowe Road. And I would encourage the Planning Board to allow public safety anywhere in town. It's important at this point in the process to leave all options on the table. There'll be a number of opportunities in the future for people to vote against sites if that's what they want. And it would be a shame to realize too late that the perfect location is not available. And I, for one, would really like to have the E M Ts really close when I have a heart attack or somebody I love does. Thank you.
Thank you. I do hope that is not the case for you. Thank you. Diana Lapari, if you could state your name and address, please.
Yes, it's Diana Lapari, three ninety-four Littlefield Road. Let's tell the truth here, you know, Boxborough is a community of about fifty-five hundred people in ten square miles. We have a major thoroughfare that runs in the middle, which is Mass Ave, which for the most part is zone commercial business and town center. We have office park and commercial districts in abundance on the west side, where I believe approximately a third of our population currently resides. We also have commercial districts near the proposed M B T A site on the other side of town. How many police and fire stations should we build to cover this ten-mile area and our population? If our population increases, we will need sub-fire stations because of response time, and those commercial business areas more than cover us. We don't need to zone for these services in our residential districts under an overly broad definition, which includes, quote, "other emergency services." What are those exactly? Are they permanent or temporary? Do you think in a real emergency, people will refuse emergency shelter anywhere in Boxborough because it isn't in our bylaws? This is all really about building a fire station at seventy-two Stowe Road. Don't leave our residential districts prey to a definition that could cause unwarranted consequences for residents in the future. Address Stowe Road directly and stop glossing over the real issue with a uselessly broad zoning article, putting these fire stations and emergencies, quote unquote, emergency services in these districts by right. An overlay, an overlay as proposed by Cindy Markowitz, makes more sense for fire and police stations. Let's do some real planning here. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan Connor, state your name and your address, please.
Thank you, Megan Connor, seventy May Fair Drive. And I just want to reiterate that public safety, I think, has a right anywhere in town that I think this should really also, the discussion of this fall under the purview of the Fire Station Building Committee, as well as the Select Board, and then eventually, obviously, go to town meeting for for full vote and support. So thank you.
Thank you. Kashava, if you can state your name and address, please.
Yep. This is Kashav Subasova. I live on ninety-four Flag Hill Road in Boxborough. I'm also on the Finance Committee. I've been very impressed with what the Fire Department and Police Department have done so far. When my wife was very sick, they would respond within four or five minutes. I had a problem last November and the Fire Department were there in five minutes. An absolutely outstanding job they have done. It's time to build a new fire station and not procrastinate and keep on delaying it. I think the fire station should be built, which can support the town and for most of the people. And we want to make sure they have a, the Fire Department Emergency Services have a really good facility. And we should not procrastinate. We should move on and get the, get the building done. That's my view.
Thank you, Kashava. Kate Davies, if you could say your name and and address, please.
Hi, Kate Davies, seventy-two Guggins Lane. I just think that it's really important that we prioritize public safety in our town and that really means streamlining the process of allowing us to build our public safety buildings and allowing our community to have enhanced public safety. So I think that that means that we have to allow public safety by right anywhere in town. It will reduce the bureaucratic process and allow us to make some good choices for the long-term health and well-being of our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kate. Christopher, would you like to state your name and address, please?
Sure. Christopher Heideck, I'm at four thirty Depot Road. I'm excited to be here. I am a big believer in public safety by right anywhere in town. I know it's a hot button issue lately with the fire station. But I really believe that the Fire Station, you know, committee will decide where they want to, they want it to go, and then the town will decide, right, regardless of of this. And I think the zoning is kind of keeping us back from that. I really want a town vote on a site. And this is kind of keeping us back. So that's what I would vote for.
Thank you very much. Alithia Tan, you could just state your name and address, please.
Alithia Tan, Wade Road. As my family and I definitely support public safety anywhere in town by right. We have medical conditions that require immediate emergency response. So we would, we would love to have public safety closer to where we live. And therefore, we support our right, the public right to public safety anywhere in town by right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Megan McKeonan, state your name and your address, please.
Hi, yes, Megan McKeonan, two forty-two Old Harvard Road. I feel like this has been a topic of conversation for a really long time. And the most foundational thing that has to happen is to permit municipal building of public safety buildings. And as of now, that, if I'm correct, that's nowhere on the books. So I understand that there's three Mass Ave addresses that are in the running for the, you know, for the fire station. But yet, at the moment, nothing can be built anywhere. So I am not of the school of hold back and let's plan more. My attitude would be, let's give our town the ability to develop in such a way that keeps our residents safe and keeps our firemen and women safe and in comfortable, secure setting for the town security. So I am for public safety buildings by right in the town of Boxborough across districts.
Thank you very much. Santosh Verma, if you could state your name and your address, please.
Sure. I'm Santosh Verma, one sixty Depot Road, obviously in Boxborough. And I would just like to second everyone who has eloquently said about public safety building anywhere in town. We need to build them at a place where they provide the most efficient care to the most of the people, population. And we need to kind of reduce the bureaucracy so the, our elected representative can make decisions quickly. And there is still a lot of steps. And if we can reduce one step, that would be great. So I support public safety buildings anywhere in town. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next, seeing Mohan, if you could state your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Mohan Gazula. I live at seventy-one Hughes Lane in Boxborough. So I'm in full support of the zoning changes and public safety. I think it's just not just important for the current residents, but also for the future generations to come. And I fully support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kristin O'Neil, I'm seeing you next.
Hi, good evening, Kristin O'Neil, four oh eight Mass Ave, two doors down from the fire station. The fire station and the emergency personnel within have been our neighbors for nearly twelve years. They've been good neighbors and we would continue to support their presence two doors down from us if it was the best choice for everyone in town in terms of safety, fiscal responsibility, and site viability. I've really appreciated watching this particular board commit additional time to fully understanding the needs of the town and hearing the concerns of residents. Your focus on public safety and the robust conversation around this issue are evidence of your careful and critical thinking. I hope the board keeps the town as a whole in focus here as you move forward. Town meeting is the most representative, is, allows for the most representative vote on this issue as we proceed to building a new fire station in town. This board has the opportunity to present flexibility of planning and allow for that representative vote to truly take place. I hope you employ unbiased approach and leave site debate and the selection of voting to the public of the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. Jay Krishna Sami, if you could please state your name and your address.
Jay Krishna Sami, one twenty Patch Road, Boxborough. Actually, I didn't mean to hit the hand symbol, but since you called me out, let me say something. So my, I keep it short. Let's keep the zoning language simple. Let's make it the public safety buildings anywhere in town. We complicated, the last time we complicated, we got into a mess. Ambiguities in the zoning language led us to all kinds of issues. So let's keep it simple. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Noting that it's nine twenty-eight, is there any other public comment at this time? Brad Hampson, I see you. If you'd like to state your name and your address, please.
Yes, Brad Hampson, forty-nine Wheeler Drive. So a couple of observations. First of all, I think the going for simplicity in the zoning regulations is an admirable goal, but the existing zoning regulations are far from simple. The various zones have dozens of enumerated uses that are either allowed or not allowed, most particularly in the in the Ag Res District where many uses that would be, you know, during business hours only, not causing a lot of traffic or noise, are prohibited. I'm not necessarily saying all of those should be prohibited, but for example, I couldn't, I'm not a lawyer, but if I were, I couldn't open a legal office in a residential district. It's prohibited. Law offices don't make much noise and they don't have much traffic. So to say that we need to solve the fire station problem by allowing municipal or public safety buildings by right anywhere, um I think folks may be assuming that there would be a vote at town meeting on whether to allow the selection of that particular site. If we make it by right, there is no vote, right? It's 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 the town's right to put it there and you have nothing to say about it. The only thing you can do is vote down the funding. And if we go that far and vote down the funding again, we're right back to square one and another year delay getting the firefighters the new facility they deserve. So I would much rather see um for example, allowing public safety by special permit in every district. That provides an extra layer of review. Yes, it's a little more bureaucratic. Um but it's not clear that you really want to allow uh by right and and remove that oversight anywhere in town. It may be that folks, the town leadership selects a site that uh the the neighbors and the butters have a big problem with. Um and I just think that's just going too far. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Uh Megan, uh state your name and address, please?
Hi there, yeah, Megan McKeonan, two forty-two Old Harvard Road. Um I do feel like I would like to echo the sentiments of simplifying. I think that given the amount of um conditions and the complexity of so much planning, there needs to be more simplicity. I think that in this case, public safety is something that all the town benefits for. It should be available everywhere. And it's not like we're trying to put up four, you know, fire stations and three police stations. We are looking to create a, you know, a a safe space for our, you know, police and fire stations. And I just feel at this point simplicity is best. And if people want to vote down locations, they can vote down locations. But I would say, make it simple, make it by right and cut out the potential to kick this can further down the road for months and, you know, years to come.
Okay, Diana Lapari, uh state your name and address, please?
Yeah, um I brought this up before and I'd like an answer, which is, what do other emergency services consist of? Because it's my understanding that our EMTs are in the fire station. Our police has dispatch in the police station. Um I looked at your packet and I saw that uh the building inspector opined that um you know, animal services would not be considered separate, but dispatch could. Well, let's look at this logically. What does that really mean? Are we going to pay for a separate dispatch building somewhere? I mean, uh it it just seems like we're creating this very broad article for no purpose. I mean, I cannot see other emergency services and perhaps someone could enlighten me what you could envision aside from a temporary emergency shelter or a temporary emergency food bank or something that would take place in a real emergency? I'd like to know what we're talking about here because as far as I can see, all we're really talking about are police and fire stations. And I and I I'd like some people to understand that when it comes to firefighting fire stations, I've done a lot of research and I don't consider myself an expert by any means, but things depend upon response time. You don't just put a fire station up on the top of uh, you know, the highest hill in Boxborough. You want to make sure that it can get to the various points. So the logical thing is to put a fire station in the middle of the town and later on, if you need to, you put substations. They would be on the edge of town. So what are we talking about here? Why are we creating this very broad article? I'd like an answer to my question. Perhaps one of the board members can address, what do you envision as permanent structures for emergency services?
Thank you, Diana. Um so this is a discussion that we have not quite had yet, that um that emergency services um definition. Um so I would like to um address that once we go through that that um definition together. I have highlighted it on my notes to come back to that question so that maybe we can give you a better um more thoughtful uh answer when we start digging into this um document.
Thank you.
Is that okay? Okay, thank you. Um uh any other public comment? Um if there is none, I would love to um get the board working so that we can try to get some language um finalized for this. Okay, I'm not seeing any additional hands uh raised. So with that, I would like to um turn this over to the board again um and start discussing um some of the new documents that we have and um and then try to get some language so that we can um hopefully make this onto ATM um this this year. So or this fall. Um so board members, um I'm opening it up to you. Uh do we have discussion? Um I know Rich, you you shared a new document. Um we have another document that um Cindy has authored. Um so Rich, maybe because it's new information, uh we can start with yours um and then we can turn it over to Cindy's document.
Sounds great. Um Alec, if you want, if you can, please, Alec, pull up the modified um article amending the use table. There were two actions, I think, uh three actions, I think I took. One was to change the, oh, Alec pulls it up. Well, start talking with heck, it's nine thirty. Um one was to change the um the use uh from a no to a yes in town center district. Uh one, two, to think about um how to deal with the size restriction um that exists in the dimensional use table, the the dimensional table. Um and three was to get the update the definition based on the conversation we had at the last meeting and have that pushed over and Alec was going to push that over to uh the fire chief or maybe the chiefs, um which I think he did. So what you so those are the three actions. What you see in front of you is uh basically the same article. What's in red is what I believe is changed from what we looked at at the last meeting. So uh we changed town center to yes. Um again, retain the footnote twenty-six must be owned or operated by the town of Boxborough. Site plan approval required for any use per section two five two A of this bylaw. The definition, so I'll hold on the definition for a moment. Um I elected, we went back and forth in the last meeting, like I was prepared to say, okay, let's go ahead and change the dimensional requirements in the use in the dimensional schedule to allow for it, but we had some back and forth. So it it wasn't clear to me that we were all aligned on that. And but I was going to go ahead and do it anyway to at least have something on the table. I didn't put it here because frankly, um it does complicate the article. Because I I didn't want to turn this article into now a discussion about town center and building size. So this article deals just with allowing public safety in these districts by site plan approval. Uh but for town-owned purposes, town use purposes, then I propose an a secondary article that we can look at, that if this passes, we can then put forward an article that would go ahead and change the dimensional restriction in town center uh to allow for uh up to a twenty-five thousand square foot public safety building by special permit in town center. So that's that's essentially what you're looking at, Alec. And if you want to comment on the, I know there was some discussion around emergency services, I think we that feedback was there. I think we 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 can pull up what Ian, the research Ian did, but we sort of mapped this to um what other communities had and we kind of picked a definition. I think there there weren't many communities that actually went to the extent of defining it, but this definition seemed to align. And emergency services was intended to be a blanket that would pick up reserve corps um pick up like what this medical protection is or or a potential emergency shelter. So it was just sort of broadly shaped as emergency service. Um but again, in the intent being a town-owned or operated emergency service that is approved by site plan approval. Um so anyway, with that, I'll turn it over, Alec, to any comments you got from the chief. I did see that there were, there was comments from, I think, maybe one of the chiefs on um dispatch potentially and animal control officer.
Madam Chairperson, do you want me to bring up the uh correspondence and the additional memo or do you just want me to summarize those verbally?
I think you can summarize it as I think there's an open question that hasn't maybe been resolved at the end of it. So.
So um on Tuesday of last week, we circulated the proposed definition to the police fire departments and to the building commissioner, who's the zoning uh enforcement officer. Um they uh the police chief uh followed up with a phone call to me, which is why there appears to be a bit of a gap in the correspondence. I summarized his questions back to the building commissioner. His questions specifically were whether this would also extend to dispatch services and the animal control officer. Uh the building commissioner uh further commented uh this morning and I summarized that again in a memo uh but commented this morning that uh the animal control officer as an independent use would not qualify under this definition as that's too similar to say, for example, a kennel, uh but that dispatch services would be included. Uh however, an animal control officer contained within a police department would be secondary and incidental and that would be appropriate. Uh the fire chief on uh on occasion uh did note to me uh that it is uh sufficient for their purposes, covers their needs. Uh the police chief had no other comment and the building commissioner had no further comment beyond those clarifications.
Thanks, Alec. Okay, uh and thank you, Rich, for uh presenting this um uh opening it up for discussion amongst the board. You have a comment, please raise your hand. Uh Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, thank thanks for, thanks for doing this. Um this looks good to me and I'd like I do agree with the separating out the, do we want to touch any of the dimensional stuff around town center or or not? Uh because adding it to this might risk this failing for reasons that are not. Um yeah, and I think I'm satisfied with the definition uh as well.
Thanks, Chris. Um additional board comments? Cindy Markowitz?
Yeah, I'm pretty good with this definition. Um but something did pop into my mind about emergency service, other emergency services. Um I used to work in the environmental field and uh there were oftentimes emergency um cleanup, hazardous material cleanup. Um I don't think that that would fall under this, but if someone were to want to locate and it would probably fall under a different bylaw, but I guess I'm just pointing out that uh emergencies, we might have to define emergency services, other emergency services a little bit more tightly or remove it. Um because I'm not sure what we're trying to cover there, but it could leave a door open to something that we really don't want to see. Um and uh I'm not sure that my example is a hundred percent uh on point, but it it does beg the question, what other are there emergency services? And I can envision that it might be something unwanted that could be considered an emergency service that you might not want to allow a a by right zone for. So that's my comment. And the other comment I want to make is the language that Rich provided on the other footnote article uh sorry, footnote five. Um I am supportive of that language, but I would indicate that it shouldn't it shouldn't be qualified, that it's only pertinent to this article. I think it would be pertinent to either zoning article that's brought forward. So when we flip over to that page, I would remove the language that qualifies it as only being pertinent to this article. I would say it should be pertinent to whatever zoning articles we bring forward, uh this or the overlay or both. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh Mark White? Uh you're muted again, Mark.
Sorry. Um Cindy, I think um it it's really doesn't a-apply because this is uh uh mu- use must be owned or operated by the town of Boxborough. I mean, that that's the underlying thing. And I mean, we're not going to operate a uh town of Boxborough emergency uh remedial program unless I I don't see that. I mean, that wouldn't be an emergency. I mean, if there was a true emergency, like, you know, there was a waste spill and they needed to somehow treat it, then a fire station would be a likely location to do it. So I I don't I don't have any problem with other emergency services. I mean, because you can pick at that in forever and all you could use the word local emergency services and that might fix it. But I I don't I don't see it as a problem, but but I like it the way that it is. I think it's simpler to just leave the dimensional stuff for town center alone. At this point, we know, we'll just come back to it later if we need to. Um so I I'm I'm happy with this. I'm 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 ready to uh ready to vote.
Thanks, Mark. Um and and Mark, you kind of touched on this a little bit. I was going to make a comment just about this um this definition. I think it's almost there, but um uh I think used by the town of Boxborough is different than owned by the town of Boxborough. So I guess I would like to make a recommendation to um to switch that to owned by the town of Boxborough?
It says owned.
Where does it say that? Where am I missing? Oh, above it. I'm sorry, I'm reading the term defined below it and I'm missing owned or operated by the town of Boxborough. Got you.
Yeah, we should mirror the same language then.
Yeah, I think so too. Thank you. I was looking at the definition, not the footnote. Apologies.
Oh, owned. Okay.
And you know, honestly, emergency services, we were attempting at the time to pull in reserve corps and other volunteer, like there was no sort of um like it's just hard to assess what type of emergency services. I mean, at the end of the day, if it was police, fire or emergency medical services, period. Like I do think the dot, the the animal control officer is part of public safety, but like, you know, I'm not, I mean, that is most likely going to be a use that's tied to another. So I'm okay with the definition the way it is, but if we if we feel like other emergency services is kind of leaving too much open, we could say, you know, or uh emergency comma or emergency medical services and call it right there.
Thanks, Rich. Um Cindy, go ahead.
Yeah, I I'd be supportive of uh truncating it at emergency medical services, period. Um and it does again um prompt me to ask the question about what is a temporary service versus a permanent service? Are we only talking about permanent services here? Could someone potentially locate a temporary? And and do we want to include a temporary uh um in this? Uh you know, should we be defining it as permanent, which I think was the intent? Um and maybe temporary falls under a different, again, a different building, part of the building code or zoning code, but.
The everything and the it's allowed according to this, right? And you we can, I think we can waive site plan approval. Like if it's an emergency, there would be, I would assume, like, I don't, I mean, that's a question today. How does it happen today? Like if there's an emergency and something has to happen, it's most likely, as Mark says, going to be at the fire station. But if it's not, we've got to set up a you know, an emergency medical center, like I I don't, you know, then I suppose they can do it because it's allowed, but then it'd have to be an emergency meeting of the planning board to uh waive site plan?
I'm against that because, I mean, we have like, uh you know, the fire department or the police department is at Pfeiffer's Day. There's there's going to likely be a, you know, a cooling tent or something that they're um setting up. I would hate to bring us to the planning board for some of that or Steel Hill, you know, events or whatnot.
I I was thinking more of like a six-month, again, I don't mean to focus on waste cleanup, but that's sort of what jumps to mind, right? A six-month cleanup site. Maybe it's just, you know, solid waste cleanup or something. Um you know, is that allowed or is that a building inspector call on a on temporary? I think we have some things in our zoning bylaw about temporary structures. Um I I don't know. I'm just posing the question. Is that something the board wants? Do you want to define it as permanent?
I don't.
Or not?
I think if we had something that extreme, uh FEMA and or FEMA might be stepping in and just telling us to pound sand um and just doing what they need to do uh to resolve a situation. If we had like some massive spill on off of four ninety-five or or something, something truly terrible, I don't think, I think they would apologize, not not ask permission, if that makes sense. So I think we're covered. I mean, if people are anxious about the other emergency services, I'm okay with abbreviating it to emergency medical services, period. Um I'm okay with keeping it in there though as well. Because there's there's groups I'm I don't know of or I'm not thinking of or might be helpful.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Rich.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Cindy. I kind of jumped in. Go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, perhaps Alec could I was just gonna ask, perhaps Alec could, could, uh, run the question by the building inspector about what constitutes as temporary, unless somebody on the call already knows, um, and, and perhaps just get that understanding before, you know, we finalize this language. I mean, um, I assume there's provisions, but, uh, I'd like to understand what, what it is just in case that situation arose.
I think the fail safe is owned and operated by the town of Boxborough. Nothing's going to happen here that just happens. I mean, a business moving in decides that they want to take advantage of some loophole in your zoning bylaw, that's one thing. But the town of Boxborough taking advantage of a loophole in the zoning bylaw to cram something in there, I don't see that happening. I, I mean, gotta have a little trust in the leadership that they're just not going to do that unless it's a really honest to God emergency, and then they have to do whatever they have to do. Uh, uh, I don't want to tie, I mean, emergency services means exactly that. You do not tie, tie the hands of people when there's a, an emergency. We don't know what kind of emergencies are coming down the pipe. We could get a tornado or a hurricane and they have to have a place to put stuff. I mean, let the town figure it out. Uh, uh, as long as it's owned and operated by the town of Boxborough, I feel, I feel safe. I'm sa- I'm good with that. Are we, can, can, are we in a point where we can make a motion?
Can we, um, finalize the comment about, uh, other emergency services? Are, is that remaining or is that removed?
I would leave it. I, I do not want to tie the hands of the emergency service providers. And the town is the owner of this.
Yeah, and I, I agree with you, Mark. I want to avoid like a red hair, red herring language.
Yeah.
All of a sudden, like, what, look what's going to happen now.
Yeah, right, 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 right.
You know what I'm saying? Like it is owned or operated, it's the town's decision, which is kind of like my, my overall premise here is like, you know, I, I really want to give us as voters in town at town meeting, the ability to decide what's right and where and when and how and how much money. And like, I'm okay with it either way, but like I, if it's going to cause question, like, well, what other emergency services? Like, I'd rather not even have that discussion because like it's, it's, we're now, we're now dealing with edge cases, right? As opposed to core cases.
Uh, I, I have a question. I, I want to ask the, the chief a question. Chief Kivlin, are you still there?
Yes.
So if there's like some type of real emergency, a toxic waste spill on 495, uh, or tornado hits us, a bomb hits us. Don't you guys have the ability to, to create emergency facilities wherever you want and really doesn't have anything to do with this?
Well, yes, in essence, that's correct. If we have an emergency, basically wherever the emergency is, we're going to take control of that scene and we're gonna operate on that scene until it's rendered safe, until we've mitigated it fully.
In a longer lasting type of emergency, I mean, something that might go on for weeks, how does that work? I mean, does that play into this at all? Uh, other emergency services is the, is that something that you need a zoning permit for? I don't think you do. I think, I think the public safety trumps everything, doesn't it?
During the emergency, yes. Um, that, that other emergency services, part of it, like if there's an emergency happening, that, that's police or fire are going to take control of that scene, zoning or, or no zoning. Um, that is our scene. That is, that's, that's going to fall under mass general law. That's going to fall under, uh, either the fire chief or the police chief having the authority to control that scene until it is mitigated. Um, and again, zoning is not going to matter when it comes down to like a hazardous waste spill or some other active, um, disaster that occurs.
Okay. All right. Thanks. I, I mean, I, I hear you, Rich, on that because you don't want anybody to say, to kind of plug in what could possibly happen, you know, as a way to torpedo this thing.
It, it's a fair question too, right? And I, I mean, my, the one fallback as well, it's owned or operated by the town, but like, I, like, I don't think we, if chief, based on what you said, I'm not convinced we need it.
Right, right.
Yeah, we can probably abbreviate it because it avoids the it avoids the introducing edge cases, which we don't want to talk about because that's not really what we care about here.
So if you want to strike that, I'm fine with it. So Boxborough for, uh, town, you owned or oper- owned, owned or operated by the town of Boxborough for police, fire or emergency medical services. Emergency medical, yeah, services, period. Call it a day.
And would that cover the reserve corps? Like, I don't, like, what do they do today? Where do they meet today? What is their, like, maybe chief, I don't know if you are aware of that, or if we have somebody on from the emergency reserve corps?
We did earlier, but.
Cause that's where this originally came from, is we wanted to include that aspect.
Chief, do you want to speak to that? Uh, the BERC did also provide their, um, their annual report. But chief, I know you were able to give me a pretty clear summary of it very succinctly, um, when we talked earlier.
Right, so BERC basically falls under the definition of what FEMA considers a community emergency response team. Uh, however, they are much more than the FEMA definition, just because of their involvement with the local board of health commission, where they're involved with, you know, your vaccine clinics and other, other types of, um, events that the board of health puts on. Um, it'd be great if they, if we had the space, they could meet at the firehouse. I know at times they do meet at the firehouse. Um, I believe right now they, they have to have a meeting. They can either meet at the firehouse or they meet at either town hall or the library. They don't have a dedicated meeting spot right now. However, all of their supplies, all of their storage is currently either in the firehouse or in trailers behind the firehouse. So, I mean, they are, they're connected to us through emergency management where fire and emergency management go hand in hand. BERC falls under emergency management. Uh, they are tied to us.
And, and it's your plan for the new firehouse to include their, storage of their equipment and accommodation of them?
Well, it, it's in the plans. Whether, whether it ends up being in the plans ultimately when we get through this, um, is yet to be determined. But it is the plan to have BERC continue to be part of the fire department, um, and have, have space with us.
Yeah, so, so based on that, I think it fits with, it, I, based on Alec, I'm not the code enforcement officer, but I think you got a reading today that where something fits within a building, it was animal control. But I think BERC would probably follow the same logic pattern if that makes sense. You don't want to pine on that? Am I, am I saying something that's?
No, I, I, if you're asking my opinion, I agree with it. I'm not the zoning enforcement officer. It, what chief just described is something that's secondary and incidental to both the fire department as well as the board of health. I know, for example, we staff, uh, BERC by providing them administrative support. Um, so it's, we're, we're talking storage of equipment that coincidentally fits in town hall or the fire station and an occasional meeting space, which we provide already at town hall.
I mean, we could say Boxborough for police, fire, emergency medical, comma, or BERC. Because that I believe was the, like, why we kind of wrote emergency services and we didn't want to limit it to BERC. But like, I'm okay with taking it out. I think we're covered by the, the ants, you know, the, the secondary use tied to the facility.
Yeah, I, I think it's cleaner if we just trim it out.
Okay, I, um, did note that, uh, chief had his hand up. So chief, if you'd like to say something, please do weigh in for us. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Yeah, yes, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to, um, I was just going to caution, if you were going to refer to BERC, I would just refer to it generalized as, they fall under emergency management, so I would just consider it, you know, uh, fire and emergency management. And, you know, fire EMS and emergency management.
I think that's what we're trying to do with what the, the current red line is, and that was adding question marks in the general public, which is not a good thing for trying, for trying to get an article through. So, yeah, I think just go into emerg- emergency medical services, period, is, is the cleanest way. It's already covered anyway. Um.
Yeah, no, I, I support that.
Yeah, so unstrike the or in front of emergency and after medical, it's services, period.
And that's your classic EMS, right?
Yep. Yeah, ambulances.
Yeah. Period.
Yeah, like Chompsford has little satellite, just ambulance base.
Okay.
Um, I'm, I'm noting that Kathy Cisco is on the call. So if Kathy, you have something, uh, specifically to speak to about, um, these emergency medical services, please, uh, feel free to weigh in.
Again, on Aug, I think it was August 4th, the first meeting, my suggestion was to add emergency management. And then it evolved into like all this BERC everything, which is fine. So, you know, if you could guys consider just adding the language, emergency management and BERC falls under emergency management. So again, I, um, I think that's what the chief was, you know, commenting on as well. So, um, and then you could get rid of the other emergency services and reserve corps, which I think you striked anyhow.
Is that, so I'm sorry, maybe I missed it, chief. You were saying emergency management services is classic EMS as opposed to emergency medical?
So I was, um, fire and EMS are hand in hand. So your fire and emergency medical services are together under the one department of the fire department. Emergency management, which the fire chief is the director of, the emergency management has its own budget and emergency management is what BERC falls under. So you have police, fire, which includes EMS. And then you also have your emergency management department, which is a combination of fire, police and, you know, uh, the BERC volunteers.
So the only thing missing is BERC from, like, if we were to say police, fire, comma, or emergency medical services, we got everything. We, or emergency medical or emergency managing services includes police, includes fire and BERC. The only thing we're really missing is the BERC.
I think if I could paraphrase, I think emergency medical services is included within fire. Um, so emergency management services, so management instead of medical, and then that, then everyone's covered. Yeah, that was my, I also thought that emergency medical services had to be called out separately. But if it's under fires umbrella, then sure, I mean, it's, it's literally the same people. So that makes.
And she, and, and if the chief could.
After, uh, management, Alec, sorry. You deleted it, but you didn't need to.
Emergency management services. So when the question is, what is that? And we can point to, and then we, you know, the chief could step up and say, well, this is what it is. This is how we're organized. And you can point to a budget line that shows emergency management services, right?
All right. Are you ready for a motion?
I'm seeing Mark White's hand up here. Unmute, uh, there you go.
I was going to make a motion. Um, first I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing. Cause we have to close the hearing before we're actually supposed to deliberate further. But now that we've gotten that far, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Is there a second?
Do we need more input from, can we, can we hear from the chief or any of the chiefs with a closed hearing? Alec?
Yes.
As part of the town staff?
So make sure. You could continue communicating with town staff, but that would be the absolute capacity. I mean, it's not an application, so it's, it's not nearly as rigid, but, um, town staff are available to, for, for clarification, yes.
Hold on, I'm going to hold it for a minute. We'll, we'll get the people with their hands raised first and then, then I'm going to make a motion to close.
Right, town hall, two of them have a hand up.
Um, uh, town hall, go ahead, um.
Yeah, hi.
You look so different right now.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to say, I think you may have overcomplicated this just a little bit. Uh, so EMS is emergency medical services. Emergency management is separate from that. What you might want to have in your definition is police, fire, emergency medical services and emergency management. And I think that captures your departments that, that do what you're trying to capture in your, um, in your definition. I think that's what the chief was referring to and Kathy Cisco was referring to. If I've misstated, uh, you know, please have either of them chime in.
Chief, can you just, um, uh, do the, be the tiebreaker on this one? Um, I, I thought you said that the fire was enough.
No, I, 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 and I apologize for not being clear. I was trying to say put fire and EMS together, but still include EMS. Uh, the way Mike just described it, I think is, would be, would be best as well. And I'll just give you an example, um, you know, during COVID, when we had to set up an EOC, you know, the emergency operations center was at the regency. So you never know where your operation center is going to have to be for time periods and things like that, but that falls under emergency management. So in the event that, in a, you know, in our, in emergency operations center had to be created, you want to have that also in the definition, emergency management, you know, so fire, police, EMS, emergency management.
Yeah, and chief.
The word medical after emergency in, in between services.
You don't need it.
Yes, emergency medical services. What I would do is I'd combine them. I'd get rid of the comma after fire. Fire and emergency medical services goes together. Emergency medical services. And then a comma after services or emergency management.
Period.
Services, emergency services. Is it services or just emergency management?
EMS.
EMS is emergency medical services. Emergency management is a separate thing.
Emergency management services or just emergency management?
Just emergency management.
Okay.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Uh, Cindy, uh, go ahead. Do you have a comment?
Uh, yeah, it was in regard to, um, I'm hoping we're not going to close public hearing until we've had a chance to talk about the other article. So I just, uh, I know Mark, I think he withdrew his motion, but I, I think we should give the other article, um, a chance as well before we close public hearing is my comment.
Uh, I'm, I'm ready to vote right now. If, if we, we get a majority here, we can just vote and, and move on to the next thing because we get plenty what else to do.
We have a second, um, article on the table right now, Mark.
Yeah, we haven't had a chance to talk about it, so, um, I guess I'm not quite ready to vote because we haven't talked about, but we, they had three articles. I'm not sure which ones relate anymore to, uh.
Let's keep talking about articles because the other article is the, is allowing the space on, the one that kind of goes with this is allowing for a larger space at town center district.
And we have a third article that talks about an overlay, um, you know, um, and, and I, I also wanted to note that, you know, I originally brought an article that looked a lot like this one, um, but, um, had a no in the agres and no in the R1. So, um, we haven't really talked about that, but, um, you know, I'm supportive of bringing forward two articles, as I think we discussed, to give the voters an option, um, to put it in agres and to not put it in the residential agres. So I hope that, that that's still the intent of the board. That's all I want to say.
I'm on board with an article that, I'm sorry, Chris has his hand up.
Chris, go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, this article actually can, I think can serve both of those purposes. So if this one is in front of town meeting and the consensus of discussion at town meeting is that residential is not appropriate, it could be amended on the floor to put N's where the Y's are, under agres and R1.
I, I think that the, the, um, overlay district is very different to this, even if it is amended.
But I mean, this, so the, if the question in, in, if the question put poor, or I guess if the sticking point with voters is residential, yes or no, you can solve, you can get. you can get both of those options with just this article. If, if a particular voter doesn't like this at all and wants an overlay district, that is, that is separate. That would be a separate article, but if it's just a contention about residential absolutely needs to be included or should never ever be included. I think this article solves it. So I, I would rather, I think you can get both of those options. So I don't think we need a separate one that had, that is this, but with no's and aggress, because you can make that happen. If that's what the.
The, the overlay district is a completely different bylaw than just simply eliminating our, our and, and R1 in, in this, um, these districts here on this.
Yeah, it's completely different.
Yeah. Uh, Rich, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I was, so I think Chris sort of answered. I was, you know, not, I'm not, so like, I'm fine with like, let's talk about the overlay, but like, I'm not, my objective is to give the town the maximum flexibility. And if the overlay is going to take away one of the specific sites that's on the docket right now, I don't think we're answer, I mean, like, that's not gonna, it's not gonna get us where we need to get. So I want town meeting to decide all this. So like, you know, but let's, let's keep, let's keep pressing because we gotta, we gotta get through this. I think we've, we gotta be at a point tonight where by opinion, we're making votes on which articles are going forward.
Yeah, I agree as well with that, Rich. And I think that the goal, I, I think out of everybody here is to push something out to ATM this year and to get something approved regardless of what the town picks and let the, the town pick which option they want. Um, so uh, that's the, you know, it would be horrible for something to get um, you know, disallowed because uh, for another year, I guess, you know, because you know, the town wanted to do something different. Um, did we, Rich, were you done with yours or show, uh, did you have another document?
Well, the only other document is the, is the, if, if we go, you know, if we want to lock in Town Center as one of the parcels, you need to go ahead and change the, and we can look at that dimensional requirement real quick to see what that looks like. And that would cover all the sites with these two articles.
Okay. And do you want to go ahead and pull that up right, right now while we're talking? So we, we can just um, tie a bow on that one too. I'd just like to.
Alec?
Yep, I can download that now. Give me one moment.
Thanks, Alec. Go ahead, Rich.
Yep, so uh, it's a zoning article, so two thirds vote. Um, changes five, one, two dimensional schedule. Uh, and I put a note in here. I don't know if this is the exact way to do it, but this article would only be taken up if Article XX amendment to change section four, one, three, C. Uh, utility and public services use and Article nine point two definition of the town of Oxboro. So only, this article will only be taken up if the other ones voted yes, if the other ones voted yet no, then we just move on. We don't take this one up. Um, to see if the, so basically it just changes the dimensional schedule without reading it. Um, basically footnote five. Um, if you go down of the, the actual language footnote five right now reads with everything except the bolded language. So it says that no building shall exceed eight thousand square gross floor area. Notwithstanding the above, any building in excess of eight thousand gross floor area, but less than fifteen thousand square feet may be allowed by special permit of the Board of Appeals under section two point three of the bylaw. I've just added in perens twenty-five thousand square feet for public safety buildings. So you'd need a, you'd need a special permit from ZBA on the uh, increased size up to twenty-five thousand square feet, which I think matches the current design scheme of the fire station. It could be thirty thousand square feet. I mean, I think the current thing I saw was twenty-two thousand. So I think this is probably fine. Probably ample, but maybe somebody on the building committee can comment. So it's meant to be simple, keeps it out of the article on the use. If we get past that, then we just talk about, okay, now we're going to open it up for public safety buildings. The other thing we could do is not bring this forward for this special town meeting. And if it turns out that this site is in fact a chosen site, then we can just attach this article to that specific site or that specific article and say, we need this dimensional change for public safety. So those are two approaches we could take, but anyway, that's, that's what this is.
Thank you. Um, Mary, can you confirm that number?
I would say the twenty-five thousand square feet is sufficient.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, Cindy, go ahead.
Yeah, as I noted before, um, I would take out the, uh, and I don't know if that was meant to be in the actual bylaw or just for our note. This article to only be taken up if Article XX, you know, uh, passes because again, even if it doesn't pass, I think this article should be brought. And if this, if the prior article doesn't pass, but perhaps the overlay does pass. Um, if it's brought forward, then I think this art, this article should still um, apply. So I would take out the uh, the italicized caveat and uh, I, I appreciate Rich's uh, wording here. I think it's, it's fine as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, I would generally agree with that too. We should try to make this slam dunk either way, honestly, just to make sure that we are getting a fire department out of this. Um, okay. Cindy, were you all set?
Oh, I actually had a question. Um, because we haven't seen the twenty-twenty-five version of the zoning bylaw, I want to make sure that the footnote five got moved. I don't remember if we moved it to the top of that column or to the uh, somewhere, but I believe we moved the location of footnote five. Alec, do you have a version? I've been asking you for this. Um, what did we vote on? What's the revised table look like? So we can make sure that footnote five is in a proper place.
That's correct. So we did relocate the footnote. We did resolve that with a gross floor area. Um, but as I've noted to the board before, we do not publish a revised bylaw until the attorney general uh, signs off on the article. So in the meantime, we hold on to the article and that sits with the building commissioner in case there's any question, but we don't, we, we don't publish a twenty-twenty-five bylaw until that's approved. We we publish the updated bylaw once it's approved.
I'd like to see what we voted, the town meeting voted to approve. So I understand what the table looks like. That's all. I just want to understand what the table look like now.
Okay, let me model that out for you, but I, I can do that as a separate exercise. Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
Does the board members have any uh, additional comments specific to this amendment in front of us at this moment?
No, so I guess we decide, right? We can always move to pass over as the sponsoring uh, board on this. Right? I mean, we, we have the judgment, right? Either it's going to happen based on we're reading a motion or we're going to stand up and say we're moving to pass over.
I, I think we can, right? And, but it should be applicable to both versions, I guess.
Yeah, why, why would you pass over? I'm still not clear why you want to defer this.
Well, if, I, the only reason this article makes any sense is if the town votes to include public safety somewhere in town. If that doesn't happen, this article makes zero sense.
So maybe this is number three, Rich, like the third one, like it's um, we, you, you bring forth um, the article um, for everywhere, then there's if that one fails, there's a backup for that. And then if that uh, doesn't go through or we move over it, this one becomes the next one, right? I mean, would that meet?
Yeah, I just didn't want, I was just trying to make sense of this, right? Like I didn't want to crowd the article with this because this, it really does complicate it.
Totally makes sense.
And so I'm, I just, as long as we have the discretion of either it still makes sense to bring forward or it doesn't. Like if, if we lose on whatever articles we put forward, not we lose, that town votes no, then there doesn't make any sense to do this. So then we should, we would just pass over it, I assume. We, we would step up and say, we're not, we're passing over this.
Yes, you can do. Yep.
Okay, so I'm okay with removing the italicized language based on that. Personally, I'm okay.
Yep, I'm okay. Sounds good.
Great, thank you. Any other board comments on this particular item? Okay, um, I, we have not discussed this article, uh, this amendment change here with the public. Um, is the board comfortable with me opening up? Uh, I see one hand raised up for comment uh, regarding this article right here in front of us right this moment.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Barbara, I'm seeing your hand uh, raised right now. Uh, if you could state your name and your um, address and try to keep it to this amendment uh, change right before us.
Yeah, thank you Rebecca. Barbara Solzmann, uh, Conley Road. Um, I'm, let's tell you the truth, it's getting pretty late, so I'm missing some of the fine points of your discussion. So uh, I hope I'm getting the gist of it. Um, I think this is really important to do away with the dimensional requirements of um, the uh, fire station for Town Center. Uh, because of the dimensional requirements um, in Town Center, that is one of the issues that the fire station building committee um, it finds is getting in the way of um, of choosing uh, I believe seven hundred or seven fifty, whatever that address is. So I, I think we should not make this an issue. I think that it's we, the town, that's going to be designing and building this building and, and we're certainly going to design and build a beautiful building. Um, that will probably enhance um, the uh, one-eleven corridor in the Town Center more than anything else, even if it is very large. And I just really encourage you to, to do away with the dimensional requirements for a fire station for safety building in Town Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Um, Mary, if you could state your name and address, please?
Mary Brolin, one fifty-three Guggins Lane. I am in full support of this change to allow that flexibility for a public safety building. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Okay, um, now, uh, let's, let's just go, we'll shift over to um, the alternate version of this if we can.
Um, Madam Chairperson, I, I do have to make a note on this article. Um, so it's good to get the public comment here. I will note that this article is outside the bounds of your existing public hearing. And so if you choose to submit this and pursue it, we will just need to hold an additional public hearing in the month of September to take this up specifically under a new notice and uh, heading. It's entirely doable, very easy to execute and move forward, but I did just want to note that for the record that we will have to notice it separately.
Okay, thank you, Alec. That's terrific. I appreciate that.
I guess I didn't catch, I, well, okay. So, but if I had this language in the other article, we wouldn't have had to do it.
No, I, I would have noted that at that time as well, that this is outside the bounds. If say it was a footnote attached to the use code, not to the dimensional regulations, then maybe that's a different story. Um, but this is a change to the table of dimensional regulations. Our public hearing notice is to address uses.
Thanks, Alec. Um, let me ask you this. Uh, we set forth a few placeholders for um, the select board. Are we still um, in a safe spot for that with this addition?
Yes, yes. When you submit placeholders, even though we give them a draft title, what you're really submitting is a zoning article, a general bylaw article, a financial article, something to that effect. And so what you truly have is you have four zoning placeholders, one of them presumably for MBTA communities. The, the four zoning articles and one general bylaw article. So yes, you can use that placeholder to execute for this purpose. And then you will just hold your public hearing after the fact.
Okay. Um, what do we need to do right now? Does a motion need to be made to um, uh, set this public hearing date? At this point?
We can do that separately or you can direct me as chair to hold it. And so we can just do that by an email after the meeting to keep.
Okay, perfect. And let's keep going. Um, do you mind pulling up um, the alternate version, please?
Yes. Um, Cindy, remind me, am I going back to your PowerPoint for this?
Cindy?
You're on mute. Sorry, I'm trying to bring up the, I put the language in, in same format, but it's exactly the same language as I showed before. So you could either bring it up in the PowerPoint or I can bring up the version I drafted, which is, like I said, same language. Just looks, looks more like the other articles.
Cindy, why don't you bring it up because it's your version and you're going to present it?
Okay, so um, again, this is the language regarding um, mending Article eight special districts and Article nine turn, nine terms defined for the purpose of defining a new public safety, uh, the use, a new use called public safety and the creation of an overlay district in which such use will be allowed. Um, so I'm proposing that we uh, insert into Article eight, which is already in existence on special districts, eight point five, public safety over, overlay district. Um, I, I guess the only tweak might be whatever we decided on this, uh, emergency medical services and other emergency services. I want to use the same language under purpose. Um, and um, then I define the overlay district, um, shall be superimposed, um, et cetera, and sorry, I'm just reading the language again. Um, yeah, so the overlay defines what it is. And then the location of the overlay um, shall be allowed only in the public safety overlay district, which should be located on the map. And then I did add um, five properties to the list, which are the five properties in blue below. Um, and I did a very crude uh, map, where I can show you where those are, but the intent of adding those properties was to address some of the uh, concerns that I heard from the public that um, perhaps they weren't um, uh, we didn't have enough coverage through town, even though my intent was to primarily uh, address the, the commercial and business district on the, on the center of town. I did uh, add those five properties. And let me see if I can, let me just stop sharing, bring up the map. Um, and let's see. Oops. There. So this is the zoning map. Um, ju, because of the size of the map, this is just the northeast corner of Oxboro. Um, so you see one district here that is three commercial properties and then this district here, which is two commercial properties. Um, which I've listed, as I said, in blue in the other document. Um, so the intent of the overlay again is to keep what I consider to be a somewhat uh, commercial slash industrial type facility out of the agres area. It addresses um, oh, twelve out of thirteen of the selected sites for the fire station building committee. And I do want to emphasize all of the sites of the fire station building committee identified were commercial sites other than seventy-two Still Road, not in the agres area. So I think there's a little bit of a uh, uh, I want to say, you know, the, the idea that we might want to put a, a fire station or a public service uh, facility anywhere in town, even the fire station building committee limited their search to the main corridor, which is the intent of, of the overlay district. Um, and I think that's purposeful because I think most people recognize the logical places to put a public safety facility would be along the main corridor in town in commercial and industrial type zone areas. Um, so that's the intent of the article. I'll bring it back up, the wording again. Um,
Can you bring the map back up, Cindy?
Yeah, sure.
Quick.
Yeah.
Because I, property parcels don't mean anything to me.
Yeah. Can you see that?
Yeah.
Again, crude, crude, but there's three parcels here. Um, just for uh, uh, this is Liberty Square Road here.
Yep.
Um, here down in the lower left, I don't know why this pop-up keeps coming up.
If you um, just right-click on those three dots on this, you can make.
Make it go away? Okay, thank you. There we go.
Very annoying.
Yeah, it keeps coming. Uh, didn't catch it. Um, so can't make it go now. All right. So down here in the lower left, that is the uh, you know, the B district going along Mass Ave, just for context. This is um, Central Street over here. So this is um, ninety Central Street and the associated parcel next to ninety Central Street. This is Central Street over here, so this is 90 Central Street and the associated parcel next to 90 Central Street. So there's two parcels identified there, and as I said, this is Liberty Square Road, this is the top portion of Liberty Square Road, includes three industrial commercially zoned parcels. This is Hill Road here. Just for context, the MBTA communities we've been discussing is up here. So that gives you some representation around other sections.
Where's the, where's the rest of the zone?
Down in the lower left here. I can, I can bring that map up again. You asked me to do too much functioning at once, hang on.
Yeah, that hasn't changed down there, right?
Correct.
The Mass Ave.
Correct. I just have to find the right the right map before I share it. Because I had to build it, so sorry, bear with. It should be it. All right, sorry, making you wait. Okay, so that's the
There it is.
The proposed overlay, and the other things are up here in the northeast corner of town. And again, if I had better map skills, I would have made it one whole map, but it would start to lose some of the granularity if I used the whole town map. So this, again, I'll just repeat, this includes several parcels to the west of 495. We know that there's public water supply being brought here. I should note that it includes a major commercial property at the end here, and also we run down to 100 Codman Hill, it's 60, 70 Codman Hill, 100 Codman Hill, and a little bit beyond that, 100 Codman Hill is a vacant property, this planning board approved a site plan approval for building Trade Shop, but that property is up for sale again. Then along Mass Ave, we've got several properties, including 1414 Mass Ave, 1300, which is under consideration now, the parcel next to 1300, I think it's 1283, those are being still looked at. What else? The Fire Station Building Committee may have ruled out a couple of these by now, but, or not ruled out, I guess made lower priority.
Hey Cindy, I'm sorry while you're going through that on the are those parcels where you have hash marks? You're following parcel lines, like the zoning, underlying zoning district underneath it is business, but then you've got a district that goes above that. So you're following the property map, is that right? The parcel map?
Mostly, except this is the 296 and the 2, what was that, 246? These were given to me by Mary Brolin at the time. So these extend beyond, because I understand they were looking behind this parcel. This is the DPW site here. I understand they were exploring the idea of going behind that parcel, and this is a municipally owned parcel. So that's why that line goes beyond the business zone. I think that's the only one that doesn't follow the parcel. Maybe back looking at the DPW line, the current DPW, or the old DPW rather. But generally, yes, they generally follow the parcel, except for that was intentional to include that 296 parcel. So as I mentioned before, these are all commercial industrial parcels, except for the two AgRes parcels, which is the existing fire station, which has a commercial building on it now, and the existing Blanchard property, which has a commercial or school building on it now.
Any other board comment?
Doesn't, doesn't include one of the sites, right, that the building committee is looking at?
Yeah, I think that's the
Yeah, it's missing something.
Yeah, that's my, and it without including all of the site, so I guess our, our, the ask from the Fire Station Building Committee was essentially, if I can paraphrase it, let us do our job, don't hamstring any of the potential things we want to look at. If we decide a particular site works or doesn't work, if that's up to them for reasons, zoning shouldn't be the thing that causes something to get crossed off the list. This crosses one off the list.
Well, you know, again, if we've heard a lot of public input tonight, if the board wants to bring this forward in this form or, you know, a different form, that is your choosing. I'm just, I think it provides an alternative to the other, I think, you know, as we've said before, the intent really is to bring the discussion down to, I think, what everyone understands might be whether 72 Stow Road is acceptable to the town or not, and this is a way maybe to force, force that discussion without being too, you know, too cute about it. But I understand the concerns. I heard the Fire Station Building Committee request, I've heard, you know, public comment. I think this does represent some of the public comment that we've heard, so I'm amenable to, you know, either way, I hope you folks are amenable to bringing it forward to town meeting and letting them have their say.
Yeah, I think, you know, it is trying to have a backup to another option, you know, and I know that the board is split on the two options for both of them. You know, but we do want this thing to pass. We want a fire station, right, or a public safety building here, and so, you know, again, time, we've been, we've been told that time is of the essence, and we have been trying our darndest to make this happen for ATM, but you know, if one of these things doesn't pass for one tiny little issue, you know, we don't have a fire department, you know? And so I just, we need to make sure that one of them is going to go through.
Yeah, I guess my, I, and you know, I've kind of gone back and forth in my mind over kind of where we're at, and it's kind of becoming clearer to me why towns, why most, if not all, towns allow municipal use zoning pretty much across their towns. And that's to give the town the ability to make the decision. And that's not town big government town, that's town us, that's, I'm needing to make those decisions. Like, you know, this doesn't include a key parcel, and so that's like a, in my mind, a kind of a fatal flaw. I don't think we, as the board, should be like, I get it, we're doing planning, right? But honestly, as part of planning, we have to think about, and we started down the path of the big matrix, right, and like, let's go through all the municipal uses. By the way, half of the municipal uses we have in town are not zoned properly. So, you know, we started down that path of let's get all this straight, and let's take a holistic big approach. And then we kind of, after we got through a public hearing, we got a lot of feedback, like, guys, don't get lost in the forest, kind of focusing on public safety, which we kind of do with the article where we changed the use table, we're focused like a laser on public safety. So I feel like that's on a path to a holistic solution. I feel like this is like a short term, like here's where the town might want to put a fire, you know, public safety, let's go here, and then like, what do we do with the next public use? Do we put it all here? I mean, this is all very constraining. Where's municipal water? Is a municipal, are we going to have a separate municipal water overlay? Like, I just don't, I'm not why I get it, and I appreciate the idea of the overlay, I just feel like it, it's doesn't feel like it's the right long-term approach for us to be on, and I just, I just assume, take the shackles off the town, us, as voters at town meeting, and let us, let us decide where something should go, and not have to worry about where is it, does it fit in the overlay, or is it outside the overlay? I don't know, that's, that's my personal view. So aside from the fatal flaw, but not including 72 Stow Road, I think it, I'm not sure this is taking us down the path we want to go down personally.
Yeah, my other take on this is that zoning should be a shield, and you know, I think by allowing it everywhere, you know, you are not shielding the residents from unintended consequences, and we've seen plenty of times, and I know it's the town we're talking about, not some, you know, no-name developer, but we've often seen unintended consequences, and this is just another approach to minimize the potential for unintended consequences. It's consistent with what the Fire Station Committee has looked at. It goes beyond that. It gives them 44, you know, gives the town 44 properties, or now actually 49 properties to choose from. And as I said, it's not like the Fire Station Building Committee has been looking at lots of AgRes properties. The only AgRes property other than the existing fire station is 72 Stow Road, and we've had pushback, you know, from residents that are concerned about having a fire station there. So I think this offers an alternative, and you know, if we bring both, let, you know, we've always said, let, let town meeting decide. I think this is an option that allows for both to be presented and let the town decide.
And if this article passes, then, you know, so be it. The town has spoken, right?
Say that again Rebecca?
I was just saying, and if the first, if we do bring forward the, in every district first, and it passes, then this is a moot point, right, but it's at least provides a backup if it doesn't go that way.
Correct.
Any other board comments? Alec, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I will just note, we are running out of time to have our consultant join us for MBTA communities.
Thank you. Any other board comment?
You want to pause this discussion and take that up and come back to this? I don't know what else, I mean, I think that what was left is to vote whether we're going to forward these on or not. Is that what's left?
I think so, at this point, unless there's more comments from the board.
I guess, real brief, I just I appreciate the effort of trying, trying to find an alternate path, and that's complicated. I think this just overcomplicates the issue, and there's going to be enough minutia that are going to get, you know, debated and argued, and it'll, it'll, I think, I think this overcomplicates. Yeah, that's
Well, I, you know, I also want to caution about oversimplifying as well, so. Should we, do we want to push this until after the MBTA, or?
I'd rather just vote. I think we're
I'm ready to vote.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I entertain a motion.
Alec, how do we do this?
I'd like to make a motion to forward both the article that identifies public safety use in all districts, and the article that identifies public safety overlay, overlay district to to be put on the warrant for town meeting for October 2025.
I would second that. Any discussion?
Yeah, I can't support that, because I don't support this, what I'm staring at right now. It doesn't include 72 Stow Road, and I think it overcomplicates it. I think we, you know, I, so I can't support it.
We've been discussing this for how many weeks? I, no more discussion, let's vote.
Yeah, I think I can't, I can't support them both. This, I don't see this one really working, the overlay.
Okay, so likewise, I'm not in support of the, the all districts as well, so would want to just say that as well. Okay, so Alec, how do we, how do we handle this? I'm hearing three folks that are, well, Mark, did you answer that?
So I would recommend first that this motion be withdrawn, and then you should take the articles up one by one.
Okay, and second, well, Mark, I wanted to hear where you stand on this before we go ahead and do that.
Again, I can't support it in its current form, no. And I actually don't think that the overlay is a good idea. I'm firmly convinced that this town needs to have the ability to choose its own fate and not be limited, shackled by restrictions when it comes to public safety. We're only talking about public safety and
Well, we're discussing whether to bring two articles
Hold on, I have the floor Rebecca.
I understand Mark, but we're trying, it's 10:45.
Well, you guys have been talking all night long, I actually need to vote an hour.
I'm asking if you are willing to bring two articles forward.
No.
Thank you. Okay, so Cindy, I'm hearing a majority asking to withdraw that motion. Do you want to amend it?
No, the motion fails for lack of a vote.
We haven't, we haven't voted.
And a motion and a second?
Okay, fair enough. I, you know, I might make a mistake every once in a while. I'm just asking what protocol needs to be next.
I'm sorry, we had a motion and a second, did we not?
Motion and a second.
Okay, so we should have a vote.
Now call the vote.
Thanks Mark. Chris Doughty?
Doughty, no.
Cindy Markowitz?
Markowitz, aye.
Rich Guzardi?
Aye.
Mark White?
White, no.
And Werner, aye. Okay, entertain another motion.
Sorry, we skipped that.
I'll make a motion to approve the zoning article number X, XX, which amended the, Alec, can you pull it up so I can actually make that proper motion? Sorry.
Just to get out of ahead of it, you would, you would seek a motion to approve the public safety use code and definition and use footnote as amended. Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Rich and seconded by Mark.
So I have a question, if I may. Is this a motion to put it on the warrant, or is it a motion to recommend?
Oh, I guess it's
Already on the warrant, isn't it?
The placeholder is already on there. So if your language is to make a recommendation, then this is simply how your recommendation will read. Then you will go back and you'll write your majority and minority opinions and bring those.
Okay.
So I'm sorry, we're voting on a recommendation, we're not, it's already considered to be on the warrant, we're voting on the language and whether to recommend or not.
Yes, you would seek a motion to withdraw the article if you choose not to put it on the warrant.
It's a recommendation we're voting on.
Okay.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, in order as how I see you, Chris Doughty?
Doughty, aye.
Cindy Markowitz? Cindy Markowitz?
I didn't hear the last vote, sorry.
Chris said aye.
Oh, I thought there was another, am I next? Sorry.
Yeah, you're, I'm going in order of how I see you on the screen.
I will say, I'm supportive of bringing it to the town meeting, but my recommendation is, is no.
Rich Guzardi?
Guzardi, aye.
Mark White?
White, aye.
And as written, I am a nay. Okay, thank you.
Can I make a motion to bring up the article? Oh no, I can't do that.
You can't do the next one, right?
That, that article will remain as a placeholder, and I can even submit it in this language format, but we will need to wait for your recommendation until a public hearing.
Okay.
Okay, Alec, let's get ready for the next material. So continuing the public hearing for MBTA communities overlaid zoning.
Madam Chairperson, my apologies, do you want to close this public hearing?
Thank you so much. It's getting late. A motion to close this public hearing, folks.
Moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. So moved by Rich and seconded by Cindy. Roll call, as I see you, Chris Doughty?
So what is the status of, is everything else already on the warrant, or?
No, closing the hearing associated with municipal uses.
Oh, sure, yes.
Okay, Cindy Markowitz?
Aye.
Rich?
Guzardi, aye.
Mark?
White, aye.
And Werner, aye. Okay, thanks for keeping me honest on that one, Alec. Okay, so next, uh, let's see, we're going to continue the public Uh, let's see, we're gonna continue the public hearing for MBTA Communities Overlay Zoning District. In accordance with MGL Chapter forty A, Section five, uh, the Boxborough Planning Board will conduct a public hearing pursuant to consider the following uh proposed zoning bylaw amendments. Adoption of an overlaid zoning district to comply with MBTA Communities Act of twenty twenty-one and further amendment of the bylaw to comply with the MBTA Communities Act of twenty twenty-one. Um, so I know that we have our consultant, um, I believe, on board this evening. Um, but I'm going to briefly open this up to public comment. Um, please be mindful that we do have a consultant on the line right now who is uh very kindly joined us at ten fifty. So uh if you have any public comment, um, please raise your hand. Okay, I'm seeing uh nothing at this point. Um, so um Alec, do you want to give any a brief update? Uh, and, or should we just hand this over? You know, I'm assuming you want to give a little bit of an update, and then we hand it over to John to field questions from the board.
Yep, so I'll just update the public on the same information I provided to you by email last week. Uh, we have provided uh near final language on the article. Uh, we have modeled out what the district would look like. Um, we have modeled uh the preferred dimensional regulations that were discussed at the last meeting. Uh, and we were successful in removing eleven seventy-two and eleven seventy-eight from the district boundaries while still staying in compliance at those preferred dimensions. Um, we have provided the updated language, and uh as the consultant, John, who you're gonna meet some of you for the first time tonight, um, as John uh will go over, the compliance model is not as simple as just a spreadsheet that you can plug things into and, and it spits back out a yes or no. There's more that goes into it. And so rather than try to provide the materials and a comprehensive tutorial and software to fulfill it, John is here to discuss the components and the pieces that go into it. Um, I'm gonna stick my neck out a little bit here, though. And I'm gonna say that what we're presenting to you tonight is a finished product. We are ready to go to town meeting. And I am confident that as we review this, you will see, we have driven this lot, or this district down to the smallest possible size we can get it. Um, and we have comprehensively reviewed how best to meet this fit, the character of the neighborhood as, as we've discussed it to be so far. Uh, but I will stop talking and I will let John take over if uh, if that's okay with you, Madam Chairperson.
Yeah, please.
All right, Sean, you should be able to unmute yourself and share your screen as needed.
Thank you so much, Alec. Looks like I am able to share my screen. So I'm, uh, first off, hello, everybody. I'm, uh, for a lot of you, we are meeting for the first time. My name is John Cruz. I'm a senior housing and land use planner with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. And uh, we've been working with Alec and the rest of the town to get to where we are now as far as having a compliant district that's gonna meet all the requirements of the law. What I'm gonna do today is kind of talk about how we sort of are able to get all the regulatory stuff and geospatial stuff, turn it into things that we can input into the compliance model, and kind of what it gives us back to give you all an idea of a little bit about how the sausage is made. And we're gonna bookend it with what the compliance requirements are for Boxborough, talk about what they are, talk about all the different ways that we got there, and then talk about, I'm, uh, where things line up and how we're compliant. So with that in mind, I'm going to share my screen and uh oh, am I, was I muted? Am I unmuted now?
You're back.
Okay, fantastic. I'm, uh, so I should be screen sharing. I'm gonna try to go full screen here. Let's see if it'll let me do this. Fine, I'll just scroll through it. Um, uh, so we're gonna, we're gonna talk through all this different stuff to have a better understanding of what we put in here and how it works. We have a very short agenda of reviewing the requirements, looking at the draft three A district, and then looking at how the compliance modeling works. And then at the end, we'll revisit the requirements again to, to talk through all of this stuff. So a lot of this is going to be stuff that everyone is a little bit familiar with. A lot of this is gonna be for the, just the, the general benefit of the public as well. I understand it's late. We're gonna try to work through it as best we can. These are the minimum requirements that the town has to meet. And uh, some of these are a little bit, I'm, uh, optional if you guys decided to go that route. So for instance, there's a multi-family unit capacity that's based on the population and number of households from the last cen- uh, census. And then there's other things like a station unit capacity, which you don't have to worry about because you don't have a train station. You guys didn't pursue a mandatory mixed-use route, so we don't have to worry about those requirements. And uh, because of the, the nature of being a small community, there wasn't any transit area stuff. There isn't any gross land area. It's really about how do you make it work and how much density and height is everybody comfortable with to get the numbers that we need. The contiguity means that if you're using multiple districts, at least one of them has to be fifty percent. But you guys just have the one, so we don't have to worry about that either. And we have to have the, the software spit out a gross density of at least fifteen units per acre. This just kind of zeroes out the ones that we're not particularly worried about. We're essentially concerned with the, the unit capacity hitting that hundred and eighteen and making sure that we're hitting that fifteen dwelling units per acre. So the first thing we're gonna look at is the dimensional regulations, just because this is a, an easier one to kind of get out of the way. And I know Alec has gone back and forth with y'all a handful of times to see how this looks. Most of these things right here are going to be directly plug and play into the, the spreadsheet. But they all play with the other components of it. In addition to looking at the size of the districts, the parcels and all the other stuff that goes into it, it'll also do things like, look at the number of parking spaces per unit and then calculate a square footage area for how much it thinks parking will take up during the maximum buildout of a parcel. So it assumes that everything is ground level without parking garages or underground parking or anything like that. It does a bunch of calculations on the backend to kind of get there. So what we have on the left here is just a, a table that I put together in Excel and then paste it into this PowerPoint. And on the right is a screenshot from the compliance model Excel workbook that EO HLC put together that shows kind of how all of it plugs in. It's a whole long list of stuff. And uh, the same way that we talked about before, some of the regulations being relevant, some of them not. Um, uh, there's a whole laundry list of stuff in here that is not pertinent to the stuff you guys are doing. But they give towns a lot of flexibility for things that can be put in there. This is the uh, the draft site right here up at the, the top border, the northern border of the town. This is just for, for context in order for us to, to kind of level set ourselves a little bit. So what, what we're doing here is we're just kind of pulling out, looking at the town, looking at where the district is in the town. And I know this isn't gonna be anything new for you guys on the board. Next, we're going to zoom in a little bit to see how things look with our latest version of the, of the draft. Or as Alex said, the, the final product, for lack of a better term. And uh, we have this collection of parcels right here. And uh, when we, we do a little bit of GIS magic, we draw a little shape, and then we have to go into the road to cover all the, the rights of way and things like that. And so this whole shape right here that we get is ten point five four acres. And unfortunately, we can't just do ten point five four divided by the density to get the unit counts because there's some other things that need to happen a little bit behind the scenes first. And um, one of those things is uh, this is another page from the compliance model. And here's our ten point five four acres again. But we have this number over here on the right that's called a density denominator. And uh, really what happens here is the Excel spreadsheet is smart enough to figure out that there are some parcels that one hundred percent entirely, you are not gonna be able to develop on, for whatever reason. It could be town-owned property. It could be a marsh. It could be a uh piece of protected open space, like a cemetery. It could be some other kind of like a, like roadway. So for instance, this zero Leonard Road parcel is essentially just a, a driveway with a turnaround. That's considered um, a parcel that wouldn't be suitable for development. But there's also other stuff that happens where maybe there's a portion of a parcel where there's a river that runs through it or a wetland or some other thing that makes it not developable. And that's the thing that the compliance model spreadsheet isn't smart enough to figure out, and that's a number that we have to calculate ourselves. We do that by taking this data set that EO HLC has provided, and these are called density denominator deductions. And essentially what this means is that this is all the land that isn't part of a right of way and isn't a entire parcel that is not developable. These are all portions of parcels that you can't develop on. And in some cases, there's um, uh, some other kind of protection behind it. So where you see what looks like perfect crop circles here, those are usually wells and wellhead protection zones and things like that. And this gives us an idea as far as what portions of parcels we have to pull out. So what we'll do is we use our GIS software, we overlay where the district boundaries are, we overlay it with this. We see which parcels have um, uh, land that we have to exclude, and we get a number that we have to subtract. Fortunately for us with this district, because we're putting it right up here, we have some little slivers of land that we had to remove, but not a whole lot. And that's why those two numbers look very similar. For additional context, this is all the excluded land that would not be considered developable by EO HLC. This includes all the roadways, all the rights of way, all the public land, all the protected land, all, all the things that go into this category. And as you can see, there's, there's not a tremendous amount left to do. Alec and I did a lot of back and forth, looking at maps, talking through different options, having him bring things to you guys. And we were trying to say, well, where are these, these pockets of land that we can really make sure that we can get a, a solid district out of without having to cut up into um, uh, too many areas that we don't want developed? And so that's how we ended up where we are today. And you can see, again, up here where our district is, there's a little bit of that, um, uh, that Leonard Drive and some of these other things that encroach onto it. So, once we have all that in place, that gets us, again, back to this number right here, which doesn't seem like much in other communities, depending on how they have their district. These numbers may end up being very drastic or very different from each other. Um, uh, having them close means we're able to do a lot as far as being able to bring down the density in the bylaw, which is a good thing. And um, from there, we have to also use our GIS software. I guess I could select them one by one with, with you guys, because there's not that many. But um, um, the way it works is that you overlay these different layers on top of each other with your draft district and where the parcels are. And you generate a text data set out of that that you copy and paste into this portion of the compliance model. This is just another sheet, and they have room for up to, I think it's like five districts, if you want to have five sub-districts. Again, not something we have to worry about. And uh, what this will do, and uh, this has so many columns, and it goes way far off the screen. But this is, this is an example to show you guys. This will model out the development per parcel, the density per parcel, the maximum number of acres per, um, uh, units per parcel. So as Alec and I are going back and forth and talking about, well, what if we added this one? What if we removed this one? It lets us be able to figure out a little bit more about what that's gonna look like without having to run too many other numbers later on to at least get a preliminary idea of what we could bring to you guys to have a conversation about. So that's what's happening here. And uh, one of the challenges with this and, and doing this work is that this is a very, it's either incomplete or there's a lot of stuff that's in here that are locked cells. If anybody's ever worked on a Excel sheet that somebody else has been the administrator of, where they say you can only do certain things in certain cells. And uh, the folks at EO HLC can unlock this and get all the right numbers. But on our end, it does a lot of stuff that looks wrong, that once we do enough of this work and we have enough conversations with them, we know to ignore it. And there's a very glaring example on this page that some of you may have noticed already, even though it's pretty late. Um, uh, this tells us that the total park, parcel acreage for this whole district is, is three acres, which we know is not true. And uh, when I click on this cell, it tells me that it's summing all the things in this parcel acres column. For whatever reason, it's not working correctly for me. It's just taking the first number of the first cell and truncating it and not doing the addition. I have to assume that when EO HLC goes in there and they do their magic to unlock all the cells, it'll fix all their formulas and they can see what's going on. But for, for me, I don't get that. I just have to have conversations with them and send a bunch of emails and hope everything is right. So I'm, I'm talking about this to really illustrate why it makes sense that, in addition to all the GIS technical stuff, there's a handful of things in this spreadsheet of our, this workbook that are just goofy, that are kind of unfinished, that were put together quickly. It has things in the dimensional regulations that it asks you, like, hey, does your community do X, Y, and Z? And then we have emails and phone calls with them, and they tell us like, oh, actually, that stuff is illegal. You shouldn't even put anything in there. But we don't have the capacity to remove it, and we do this stuff for right now. So it's a very imperfect tool. It's a very problematic tool, but it's the one that they gave us, and it's the one that we have to work with. So we hit all those points. We got all of our dimensions straight. We got our district size straight. We got all of our regulations straight. We're able to extract all the parcels out of it and then paste them into this thing. And at the end, it gives us a little summary table. And um, this is the summary table where it would have all five sub-districts if you guys had them. So the total column and the district one column look exactly the same. But this gives us exactly what we want, in the same way that we were talking about how things looked before with the two pieces of the compliance that we were really concerned with, which was the unit capacity for the district and the total number of dwelling units per acre. That's these two numbers right here. And those are the important ones. Those are the ones that we really needed to get to. So again, to bookend this conversation, we look at what the minimum requirements are, and everything in the model column needs to exceed all of that. We see, all across the board, we're passing, a large part of it is because there's stuff we don't have to worry about, like station area or um, uh, any kind of contiguity. But we have the, the units that go past the minimum. We have a gross land area. That's what we would want to see. That's kind of appropriate for something like this. Otherwise, we'd have to be building um, a lot higher. And then dwelling units per acre, because there's all this other excluded land and density-denominated land, it means we can have a lower number in the bylaw than what actually spits out of the uh, the model. So even though we have thirteen in the bylaw, we're modeling at fifteen point seven. So that works out really well in your favor and uh, just for district compliance and being able to get this number to a, a reasonable amount for a pace of development. And uh, that's all I have. I'm gonna put my contact information up here for all of you and as well as for the benefit of the public. And uh, I'm happy to go back to some other slides, keep talking about this stuff, answer questions, whatever it is you all need. So I'm, uh, Madam Chair, I'm gonna turn it back over to you.
Thank you, John, and I really do appreciate you getting through such a large amount of information um, so quickly for us. Um, that's very appreciated. Um, can you go to the slide just before this one, John? Um, so I, I see the minimum and I see the modeled. Um, are what we're proposing right now, is that allowing for the modeled, or is it allowing just for the minimum?
It is allowing for the modeled. So the modeled is after we plugged everything into the Excel compliance model. This is what it gave us.
Okay, because I, I guess a question from my side would be, do we want to allow that much potential capacity um, on this? So just, just wanted to flag that. Um, board members, um, any comments or questions that John can help field for us? Go ahead, Cindy.
Yeah, I think we did have a question last time. Can we cap the number of units? Um, and I'm not sure if that was what you were answering, John, but, you know, I'd like to see us cap it at a hundred and eighteen, even if it models up higher. Are we allowed to do that?
We are not allowed to do that. I went through this in another community, and that's actually one of the, the fields that's in the compliance model. As it asks you, is there a cap on the number of units you're allowed to have in this district? And uh, I sent something over to EO HLC, and they said, yeah, actually, you can't do that. We were supposed to take that out, and they, they told us that that's not legal. So that's not something that we'll be able to do. But what I want you guys to understand is that this modeled number is a theoretical maximum buildout of the zoning. And I don't think there's anywhere in town that has hit a maximum buildout of what would be allowed under the zoning. And it's the same for most towns across the region. Um, we've even seen some cases where, um, in Ipswich, for example, what was allowed to be built under three A by right was actually less than what would they, would be allowed to build in their downtown now via special permit. So I think we're all pretty far away from seeing any of these, these maximums actually happen.
Can you just explain that a little bit further? Is it because of the setbacks now that we have, or that we're talking about that would limit this? Because, you know, again, I, I just not sure I understand fully. If you can't do it, or are you just saying it likely wouldn't happen?
We cannot do it. It, EO HLC has told me it is legally not possible to add a cap.
But you're saying the town likely wouldn't, given the dimensional uh requirements?
I'm, I'm saying it is not legal to have a cap on the number of units in the zoning district. That is what EO HLC has told me. I've asked them about this question specifically on another project.
But we could minimize the lots more.
Yeah, if you tweak some of the inputs, could you still get a modeled number that was slightly lower, but with slightly like larger setbacks or something?
No, um, uh, the, the bottlenecks here aren't the setbacks. The bottlenecks really have to do with the building height and the, um, uh, the parking and the open space versus um, uh, amount of maximum developable space. It is not going to be possible to lower this and also get the density to be at least fifteen units an acre. In order to do that, we'd have to reduce the size of the district.
Right, so that I think that I just, that's what I was just saying. Right. So that I think that I just, that's what I was just saying, right? We'd have to, we could remove parcels um, as they are currently laid out in this district, right?
That's, yeah, that's the only way that we could reduce the, the modeled unit capacity would be to remove parcels.
Or could we um, just, I'm just throwing this out just so my, my brain gets around it. Um, but uh, if we added a um, larger setback, then is what is out there currently with residential? Like, uh, could, could you approach it from that direction too, John?
The setbacks are not the bottleneck. I could put in hundred foot setbacks all the way around. It's not going to make a difference.
Okay, great. Thanks. I just want to make sure I understand that. Um, Rich, go ahead.
What, what's, John, and I apologize if I'm, I missed it and you said it, is the, so is it the, are we allowing three story on Leonard Road? Oh no, two, two story everywhere?
Two story everywhere. So the way that this works is that so EO HLC has said that for these adjacent small towns like you guys, you don't have a minimum district size. It can be whatever size you want, as long as it gets the number of units and the, the density. But of course, if you had a, you know, a one acre parcel, you might be looking at, you know, twenty units stacked on top of each other or something like that to, to get there. So um, we find ourselves in a, in a situation where it's um, it's, it's a little bit challenging to uh, to do a little bit more than what we already have, if that sort of makes sense.
Yeah, the, and, and we confirmed Alec, I know I probably asked this twice. They look like three story buildings, but we confirm there's only two. Those are two story buildings on Leonard Road.
They, they pop on the GIS as two story, which to me indicates that they make use of a sub basement or a, or a sub floor of some sort.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that sounds right. So because you have no minimum size of your district, if you wanted to have multiple sub districts, those districts would need to be at least five acres each. And uh, there's no real way to split that up right here, even though we have ten point five four, the, the parcels themselves don't add up to five acres and five point five four acres. So it's, it's not really possible to do that unless we wanted to add another parcel um, uh, on, on the main road there. And that would give us enough for five acres to have a sub district, but it's, it's a little bit tricky. You guys, you guys also work something into the bylaw if you wanted that said like, for instance, all parcels um, uh, facing a road may be allowed to go up to three, or you could add other things in there as far as, you know, like um, variances and stuff like that.
Yep. So I'll, I'll jump in a note here, John, too. So the board, um, you should note that in your updated version of the, the Word doc, the, the bylaw itself, we have included now a subsection C of eight point five six dimensional regulations. That's referred to as dimensional variances, and it provides you the language that uh, for those proposals located along Leonard Road, variances may be granted at the discretion of the zoning board of appeals and shall not be reduced or increased beyond the following dimensions. And it allows for up to a three story height requirement. Uh, and it reduces the setbacks or requirements based on the results of our previous discussion. So you'll remember you had modeled it out. Or you had discussed it out in two ways. And we have allowed for a dimensional variance. Now, if you want to simplify things down, you can just eliminate that dimensional variance, but we captured it in the ability through the variance section.
That's great. And something else for everyone to keep in mind as well is even though somebody could be granted a variance to have three stories instead of two, uh, um, it doesn't give them the ability to work around the density requirements. So they're still going to be subject to those thirteen dwelling units an acre density. They would just be going up higher instead of wider.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I know, I mean, like, I'm not bothered by the hundred sixty-four. I mean, it's not too far from what we are today there. I think where it's forty more, but like, we've all, we've slimmed this down. We were at twenty acres with a lot of undeveloped land. I think last meeting. Now we've achieved our objective of slimming this down to the, kind of the quote unquote minimum. Um, and uh, like I think that all the parcels make sense. They're all similarly situated and developed today. Like that, I, I don't know that pulling one out makes a lot of sense right now. I'm not sure that like the Mean More condominiums are going to get redeveloped in a hurry. So maybe the front parcels would. So I, I'm, I think I'm, I'm good with this, so.
John, could you speak to the thirteen units per acre? Because I think that's something we've briefly mentioned, but I, I don't know that even I am fully grasping. Can you explain that?
Yeah, sure. So in a perfect world, if you wanted to have a overlay district that is meeting the, the minimum of the three requirements for the state, really the only way that you could have that would be if you had a perfectly square parcel that had no excluded land, no rights of way concerns like we have here. And uh, no other density denominators stuff, like just a perfect undevelopable parcel that was the exact size that at fifteen units an acre, it would give you either the minimum or very close to the minimum of what you want. So what we have here is a district that's ten point five acres. But what it's going to do is it's going to subtract all the, the density denomination stuff that creeps in into a hundred and a hundred rear. That gets us down to ten point four. It's going to subtract the roadway and the right of way down here, because that's excluded. It's going to extract everything here for this little Leonard Road turnaround, because that's excluded. But the way that the, the zoning language has to be written is it has to be written for the entire area. So even though we're saying it's thirteen units an acre for all this, once we subtract all that stuff that I talked about subtracting, which is what the compliance model will do, it says, well, it's thirteen units an acre, but a big chunk of this can't actually be developed. So the, the practical density for what somebody would actually be developing at would be around fifteen point seven, once you remove all of that stuff. The challenge is it's looking at it from an entire district standpoint. And when somebody's going to be actually developing on here and what you guys are going to be checking at is going to be against that number that's in the bylaw. So when somebody wants to, say for instance, develop a hundred or develop twelve thirty-eight, when you guys do that, I'm a internal, I'm a in board site plan review, you're going to be looking at the size of the parcel by how much um, how many units people want to develop there. And that number has to be no higher than thirteen units an acre, or it's not going to be legal. So this is one of those things that works out in the town's favor. Because it allows you all to have a lower density number in your bylaw than how things actually look um, on paper. Because of course, no one's developing in the right of way. No one's going to be redeveloping Leonard Road, stuff like that. Uh, the compliance model makes a lot of assumptions about how development will happen. Some of them make a lot of sense and are good workarounds to try and stop communities from um, finding ways to skirt the law. Other of them are just things that are a little bit challenging and um, work throughs that um, we're required to do, but don't actually have a realistic impact on development. You know, no one's going to be building something in the middle of Hill Road, you know?
So then, John, just to really further discussion and, and provide the clarification, our bylaw will actually read multifamily housing will be allowed at a rate of no more than thirteen units per acre.
That is correct. And I am uh, reached out to um, Emma Sellings at EO HLC just to double confirm and say, hey, is it cool? If it says thirteen units in the bylaw, as long as it models out? And she said, yep, not only is it cool, but we've had other communities do the same thing. And she sent me over the compliance determination letter from uh, from Norwood that had a very similar situation for how things shaped up with their districts. Yeah. So this is something where it works really well in your guys' favor. If you want to keep the uh, the development of lower as opposed to something a little bit more intense.
Yeah. And so really to emphasize to the board what that means, because we as a board, we, you as the board and I as your planner, we've sat down and discussed this. The most likely parcels to get moved, if they're going to get moved, are those four fingerlings on the front of Hill Road. Eleven ninety-eight, twelve fourteen. Let's say twelve fourteen comes in tomorrow. And they decide they do want to develop. They are not proposing fifteen point seven units. They're proposing thirteen units. And so that's a net growth of seven units on the parcel, not nine units on the parcel. That's the way that we've helped drive that number down for you.
Yep, yep, that's exactly it.
Added comments, board members?
Alec, can you explain that variance language again?
Yeah, absolutely.
Do we want to pull that document up, Alec?
Yeah, I'm happy to bring that up real quick. Bear with me. All right. So you will see, we've updated this and, and I'll note, this is the clean version. I can bring up the full red line version, but for the purposes of this discussion, I wanted to simplify it down to the clean version. These would be your standard dimensional regulations. We've captured the unit capacity up here, permitted uses. But you'll see, we have added a section, a subsection C, dimensional variances. The variance to these dimensional regulations for those proposals located along Leonard Road, so that exclusively means they have to collect their frontage along Leonard Road, which is today, the Mean More condominiums and a hundred rear. Uh, variances may be granted at the discretion of the zoning board of appeals and should not be reduced or increased beyond the following dimensions. So you look at this table compared to this table. And you can see, for example, there's an increase in maximum building height. So that means someone is allowed to ask for up to three stories in height, but they cannot go above that. So there's an implied limit to what this variance can be. Similarly, uh, you had talked about a reduced setbacks in the area. So they could reduce those setbacks to thirty, twenty, thirty, but they could not reduce them further. They could also ask to say, reduce it to twenty-five instead of the full, or the, yeah, they could ask to do, let's say uh, thirty-five instead of the full thirty reduction. And that would also be acceptable, but it would require that variance. So the variance gives you the opportunity to split the dimensional requirements within the district, like we talked about. But it's not inherent, and it's not something that we can simply do. John and I had discussed, you know, could we split it for, could we split the district for dimensional purposes? But then you run into this requirement where if you're going to split it, you have to do a minimum value of five acres. So if we had included the single family home along, along Hill Road, that might have been an option, but where we eliminated it, that was no longer an option, because you've only got four acres, give or take on the front.
If we, so one would assume that we're still able to get that, that modeled number um, list that you showed, John, um, is totally um, reliant on the non-variance option, right? It's all in the.
Yeah, that, that's correct. So there's, there's, there's a handful of communities that have things that are kind of like an X or Y sort of situation, or they could be um, variances for, for height or parking or setbacks or whatever it is. And uh, when we have a single district like this, what we do is we have to kind of model um, what is uh, going to happen as far as either the, the greatest or least, depending on, on how things look. And for something like building height, we're going to model it at the, at the least because that's what they have the ability to do by right. Anything else that they are not able to do by right um, uh, wouldn't be three A compliance. So we wouldn't be modeling that stuff out.
So that number one sixty-four that we showed at the top of the modeled version before would, in theory, under this variance, if it was accepted and approved, could be two forty. I don't know, I'm just throwing a number out.
That's, that's not correct, because they would still need to abide by the density requirements of thirteen units an acre. So that's basically saying you can build more horizontally or take up less of a footprint and build more another story up top, depending on what they want to do. And I would imagine that decision would depend on a lot of things that would be development specific. But they essentially have uh, each, each parcel has a number that they can develop at thirteen units an acre. And that's not going to, that's not going to change, depending on whether or not they go two or three stories.
Okay. Um, so technically, under this, I know it's three stories, but our, our two stories look like three stories to, to Rich's point out there. So our three story might look like a four story too. Even if it's technically not, right? I'm just tossing that out, because that could feel a little bit different in, in the community surrounding um, than uh, what's out there right now. So uh, go ahead, Cindy.
Yeah, to that point, um, I notice we're using the term story, but in our dimensional table, we use uh, actual feet. So can we convert two stories to a foot number and three stories to a foot number? Because that might solve that problem, Rebecca, if uh, if that's from grade, right?
I was gonna say, because we have height restrictions. So you can't do three stories with a peaked roof.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Maybe instead of story, we should put in a uh, you know, building height limitation.
John, correct me if I'm wrong, but yes, that's something we can do. It just means swapping out the measurement to, to a different criteria.
And a lot of times, um, and there's room in the compliance model for this and other zoning bylaws have this type of thing where it'll have stories and feet. Um, to give people a little bit of a better idea as far as what the restrictions look like and uh, like was just mentioned, different dimensions for things like pitch roofs and stuff like that, like that's all appropriate. That doesn't really change anything on my end. If we wanted to say, you know, maximum two stories or twenty-five feet or whatever it um, works out to be from the architecture side.
Yeah. And so I'll note, in your bylaw, you measure both maximum building height and maximum stories. So you just need to tell us what's more important to you here. If we do, if we do three stories, that's forty-five feet. Uh, if we do two stories, are potentially down to thirty feet. If we do two stories, that's presumably thirty feet.
I'm sorry, say that one more time. It's thirty or forty-five?
So in your bylaw today, you have both a maximum stories, which across the board is three, three stories. And then in each district, you have a maximum building height in feet. You have both measures of, you have both measurements. Um, in all but the B one district, you allow up to forty-five feet in height and three stories. In the B one district, you allow three stories and for one reason or another, only thirty feet in height.
I wonder if that's a mistake.
So if you want to carry that mathematics across, we would do in a two story district up to thirty feet.
Is, is that possibly a mistake, Alec, that a three story building could be thirty feet?
Um, I, I don't know how you'd fit that. When I measured, for example, when I did your three D modeling, I assumed that the two story building was, I, I was being incredibly conservative in my modeling and I showed a twenty-five uh, twenty-five foot height. So that's at two stories and that was real tough. I, that, that was to get it low. So I, I don't know. I don't know that thirty is practical for a three story. I think thirty would be more practical for a two story.
There might be an error in our dimensional table. Somebody should run that to ground. Under the B one.
Rich, you're being patient over here.
Yeah, so this uh, so stories means livable floors. Is that what we're, like, I'm just trying to be as under, understand this as best as possible. There would be two floors of livable space. It's not two floors plus an attic that somehow, like, when we, when you used, John, when you modeled this, it's two living floors. Is that right?
Yeah. So if there's anything that's like a living attic, that would be considered like a half story. That, that's how that stuff is typically presented in bylaws. And you'll see something that may say three and a half stories allowed, and that would be like an attic kind of situation.
It can also be like your basement level too, Rich.
Yeah.
It's uninhabitable.
Yeah. And so, so I'm going to kind of go back, I think, Rebecca, where you were going, like, this whole modeling was done on the main dimensional table, not the variance table. What are we, are we doing the variance because it resembles something that's already there?
Um, the, the, the only reason, I'm, I'm just going to be blunt. The only reason I would advocate for the dimensional variance, if you want to include it, is that if you let someone increase the, the building height in stories, you're potentially going to get a lower maximum lock coverage and a greater open space. So you might have, you, you might get more open space because you're allowing an increased building height. That's really the, the, the benefit to doing it. And that's what, again, reducing these setbacks allows you to also do is potentially shift it in one direction to get it away from maybe some more protected or better resources and, and increase that open space. But again, it, it's modeled at this, your, your base dimensions. If it's too complicated, we can remove the dimensional variance section and you can always bring it back another day.
How come the coverage in the open space looks the same in both options?
Thank you.
It is, because that's a maximum minimum threshold. So while we allow people to increase the story height, we don't allow them to increase the lot coverage, but by allowing them to increase the story height, but not increase the unit capacity, then you encourage them to give a little bit more open space.
I'm just wondering if we'd want to encourage them by way of a written percentage instead of um, giving them a minimum or maximum. um, giving them a minimum or maximum, I guess, maximum, minimum.
I, I worry that this confuses the article and potentially creates more housing than the two forty, whatever the number was.
One sixty-four?
One sixty-four. Yeah.
Two around a hypothetical.
It just, I'm worried that it complicates it to the point where we can get caught in a rabbit hole. For the, for the sake of moving the discussion along, uh, Madam Chairperson, can we take a quick poll of the board just by yes or no answer? Would board members like to see the variance section struck from this bylaw?
Uh, if, if the board feels comfortable not asking additional questions, I guess, yeah, I'm fine with taking.
Before we have that vote, um, I think I asked this before. Uh, uh, an A and R to reconfigure the lots is not allowed, right? This calculation is based on the lot configuration today. And so somebody couldn't A and R, then then start messing around with the lot sizes.
That is correct that this is all based on the, the lot sizes as they are right now. It's, it's been a little bit of some double speak from EO HLC because they told us that everything has to work within the confines of the, the parcels that we have. So, um, a collection of ten one-acre parcels will not model as many units as one ten-acre parcel, if that makes sense, because of all the setbacks and parking and everything else. Um, uh, but they've also said that they hope that this does encourage the consolidation of parcels where necessary in order to, to get development done, which is why they have us include things in the zoning district like, um, roadways that will go through existing developments and stuff like that. Because they think all that stuff may be developed one day.
But what I will note, Cindy, because your, your question also explored another avenue here. It's modeled based on the conditions today. Nothing we do can prohibit someone from filing an A and R and changing the lot lines. But that also is contingent upon different property owners deciding to merge properties. And as we've already discussed, Mean More condominiums, a hundred and a hundred rear and Leonard Road itself are all tied up into one. So you're really, we're just referring to those individual apartment buildings on the front and they're still capped by that thirteen units per acre. So it, we're, we're still talking a difference of existing units to future units. And that's a difference of a little less, that, that, that's a difference of maybe seven units per fingerling at a time.
Okay. So there's an A and R doesn't skirt the, uh, the density requirement of thirteen per acre. Um, so you're not, I just want to make sure we're not going to slip into a loophole here.
No, in fact, I'll say this too. I'll, I'll take a step further. If someone was to say acquire all the fingerling parcels, then it would open the door instead of doing apartment-style buildings. It would open the, them, it would open the door for them to do something more like uh, townhouse style developments as opposed to, to apartment buildings. The smaller you make the lot, the more you force them to have to consolidate and really densify that structure itself. More units you have to physically fit in it. So it may actually have to some in town, a preferable consequence if you merge those lots together because there's the, there's the opportunity to create a little more space in between them and break them into smaller building sizes. And that's if we do the dimensional. Yeah, that's regardless of dimensional variance. That's if someone filed an A and R, which is not something we can prohibit.
And I want to add on to that effect too, about something that we have in the dimensional requirements is a 10,000 square foot minimum lot size. There are no parcels in the draft district that are 10,000 square feet or less. So this doesn't affect anything that's there. That is specifically for if somebody wanted to buy a larger parcel or buy a couple and consolidate them and do what Alec was saying and turn them into townhomes, they wouldn't be able to subdivide that smaller than 10,000 square feet.
Um, so since we're, uh, referring to, well, we have between, I guess, with this variance, um, option, we're referring specifically to, uh, Leonard Road and that. Um, are they, like, if somebody does buy this whole thing and, um, they do an A and R and, um, can they revise the road layout?
Yeah, I have that same question. Is Leonard Road a public road and could it be, could it be revised?
Bear with me. If I bring my screen share down, I can actually figure that out myself.
I mean, I would assume that somebody could realign the roadway and, and then in doing that, would it grant them more flexibility on the site uh, with a, a three-story building, I guess?
Um, zero Leonard Road as it is today, uh, that is a private road. It's a private road owned by in part Mean More Development RT. So it is tied to the original subdivision of Mean More condominium. So you would need to get a vote of the condominium association to be able to revise, uh, the layout of Leonard Road.
Okay. So based on that, the variance option makes me a bit, um, a little bit nervous.
Yep. So as I've said, if it's a sticking point for anyone individually, or we think it's going to raise eyebrows at town meeting floor, you can tell me right now, you don't even have to vote on it. If just a majority of the board says, yeah, let's go ahead and strike that, I'll delete it right now.
Okay, um, let's just take temperature here. Um, how are people feeling about this? I'm going to call on you, Chris. You're first.
Okay, I think I'm good.
With, um, strike, this is specific to striking the variance or keeping it in.
Sorry, which? Made I'm a little bit tired.
No, it's totally okay.
The details.
The variance allows for up to three stories on the Leonard Road, um, roadway.
Yeah.
So I guess I'm, I'm asking if, uh, the temperature of the board to see if we want to strike that. Um, there's been comments about it maybe making it a little bit more complicated um, on town floor, um, and then, you know, concern about somebody doing an A and R and combining all the property, um, sites into one big package. And then maybe being able to realign, uh, Leonard, which would then give more flexibility to developers.
I feel like, I feel like that's unlikely to actually happen. Kind of, I'd err on the side of whatever is going to cause the least confusion at, at town meeting. Uh, and that might be with just having one height overall. But I'm, I'm, I'm easily swayable if, uh, if others have strong, strong opinions.
Uh, Mark White, what say you?
Um, I, I agree that it's very unlikely that they're going to merge lots there, but you know, I also like the flexibility of giving, uh, three stories under very specific conditions and as a trade for uh, a better layout. But, um, I don't like variances, period. And, uh, I, I would say strike it and we can always bring it back later because it doesn't, it doesn't change anything. Uh, we still comply. We won't get more units one way or the other. So, uh, and, and I think, you know, two-story is more, you know, for that type of development, I think two-story is kind of more boxcar style. So I'd like to see less three-story stuff. So I, I'd say strike it for now. We can always circle back later if we get a, a proposal from someone who says, well, here's what I would do if you let me do this.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Rich, you kind of made your statement, but, uh, give you another opportunity.
Yeah, no, I, I think striking. I mean, I think it, it's promoting a, you know, I don't think anything's going to happen with Mean More right now. That's a huge investment for somebody to go in there and, and buy it to do something different. And then the combination with the front, I think if that did happen, it seems like it's a bit unnatural trying to access it from Leonard Road. And it now starts to get inconsistent with what we talked about along Hill Road. So I, and, and, and it makes it more complicated. So, sorry. I probably said more of what I said earlier.
No, thank you. Um, Cindy, you're up.
Yeah, I was actually thinking I might be supportive of this. Um, I know that's shocking. But, um, you know, it does give the developers some flexibility. It could enhance open space. They might add some amenities that, um, you know, might be supportive. Um, we could potentially add another affordable housing. Uh, caveat, I don't know if we're able to do that, but, um, you know, if they went this route, you know, then a higher percentage of affordable hu- units might have to be affordable. Um, so I'm actually supportive of keeping it in. I'm not worried about it being too complicated. That doesn't worry me.
Thanks, Cindy. Um, and I, well, go ahead, John.
Just, just to respond to that really quickly, just because we're adding more stories does not mean we are adding more units. We will not see greater development with this variance. There is not a chance for greater affordability with this variance. The number of units that can be developed on a parcel will not change regardless of if we allow one, two, three or four stories because the density is going to still be capped at that thirteen units an acre. So there's a theoretical maximum build out for each parcel. It just depends on if the build out looks more horizontal or more vertical. That's all we're talking about.
Are we able to, if, if, if the number exceeds a hundred and eighteen, can we make that differential above a hundred and eighteen? Um, require a percentage to be affordable above and beyond what we've already got with a hundred? If we get ten percent of the hundred and eighteen, can we request anything above that? And I know I'm getting off topic here, but.
Um, the, the answer specifically to that question is no, with a but. And the but is we won't know what the maximum affordability we can ask is until we complete our um, financial analysis, um, which won't happen until later on in the fall.
Thank you, John. Um, and I would be in favor of striking this, um, for this one.
Okay, that's a majority, so I'm going to go ahead and strike it.
Um, okay. Uh, do we want to scroll through additional, uh, changes? Do you have additional changes or was that it?
So there, there's a lot of changes throughout. As I said, this is the clean version. Um, I do want to note, um, so for example, we added electric vehicle spaces. Um, this is pulled from the, um, the opt-in stretch energy code is point two spaces per vehicle parking space. So unlike where it's, uh, unlike vehicle parking spaces and bicycle, bicycle parking spaces, where it's a calculation based on unit, which we did model against and confirm these are viable. Uh, EV spaces is based on the total number of spaces. So it's a fraction of the total spaces have to be electrical vehicle spaces. Um, let's see.
Right.
Affordability requirements, this is the language we talked about before. Gives us the flexibility to accept an EFA at a later date in time if it shows above 10%. But if that comes back as less than 10%, we're not bound by it. The, the, the requirement is still 10%.
And will we get pinged if, um, that percentage gets recalculated?
Yes. So effectively, John and his team will turn that over to us the moment it's done. And then we simply, we, we simply put it on file, we throw it on the website, we make it publicly available, but we do whatever we have to. Uh, Craig, if I'm wrong, John, we don't even have to go back to the attorney general because the way this is written, we just have to prove we have an EFA that passes EO HLC's muster for how it was conducted.
Yeah, absolutely. Which I'm feeling very confident about. Um, our, our team does really, really great work on this. We've done lots of 3A compliance projects. We're the only part that we've had as an outside, um, entity has just been doing the EFA stuff to determine this financial analysis. And, uh, what, what'll happen is we'll turn that over to you guys. Alec will take a look at it and I'd imagine it'll be a, a statement or something at a public meeting or something sent out to the board that either says the EFA has confirmed that we will not be able to have a maximum affordability greater than 10%. Or the EFA says we will be able to have an affordability requirement of X with whatever X ends up looking like.
So this board, um, this board asked that we simply point back to our site plan review wherever possible. Um, I asked John to take a deep dive into it, review your site plan review rules and regulations. And, uh, John actually was very complimentary of your site plan review rules and regulations, noting that it could have actually made a lot of towns, lives a lot easier. So you'll see this language is drastically pared down. And all it does is it points back to your existing site plan review criteria. That's Article two point five, Article eight point five, which is this bylaw, as well as the planning board rules and regulations for site plan approval. Additionally, the board had inquired whether design review board was something that we could subject this district to. And when John and I discussed it, we discussed that as an administrative review process. So feedback back to the planning board, advice back to the developer, that is something that would be acceptable so long as it's not a point of critical failure. So you'll see I've worded it here, design review board. The design review board shall review applications for site plan approval within the overlay district and provide feedback to the planning board. Design review shall be advisory in nature and will not be grounds for disapproval of a project. So you will have that discussion. The design review board will review the project. They will provide feedback. And I presume that Rebecca and the team or whoever else would be on the design review board at that time would work constructively with the developer to make it a little bit more palatable for the community, provide feedback that's reasonable in nature. Um, and we would either apply conditions to meet that. Uh, or if it's something that simply can't be meet, the developer just has to demonstrate that and tell the board such.
Can we change that to the sole grounds for disapproval of a project? Or the sole reason for disapproval of a project? Because I do think it factors in, um, so I don't want to be.
I would feel most comfortable submitting this to an EO HLC reviewer in its current condition. Yeah, today we can't, the, the, uh, design review is advisory only, right?
I, I almost wonder if you have to even say that because that's in our regulations already. I, I don't feel strongly one way or another, but I just, it, that is our current charge.
I mean, I'll, I'll note, Rebecca, when we get back the, the design review board response forms, it usually says something to the effect of this site is outside the purview of the design review board. This puts sites squarely in your purview. While you can't say this doesn't comply with X, Y, and Z, it gives you the opportunity to provide critical feedback and the team behind you to assist in that process.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not arguing that part. I meant the, um, the purview that basically that it's advisory in nature. I, I'm just thinking, we've got a lot of feedback from the community that says broaden the, um, purview of the DRB. So if that changes potentially at some point, um, are we creating a place where we have a little hiccup that needs to be amended as well? I'm just, you know, I'm just thinking forward, um, you know, because
So.
Right now it is advisory, right? And, but if that changes, we're going to have to change it here too.
Well, so that would first require amendment of the design review board's capacity. If you first amended the design review board to have such a constructive level of approval in every district, then I would tell you, yes, absolutely go in and strike this section. But I think that is another debate that has to be had on town meeting floor first
Yeah.
in order to consider striking this.
I mean, it's just something we just do a search for in our bylaws and we find it and we amend it. Yeah, okay.
What's wrong with saying sole, the sole grounds for disapproval or the only grounds for disapproval? It's a good way into a, a factor for disapproval, but just wouldn't be the only grounds.
I mean, it, this is still site plan review. That's the cost, should I remind you? It's, it's site plan. So long as they don't meet the, so long as they, so long as they meet the zoning requirements, it's hard to deny a site plan review.
Well, then to Rebecca's point, maybe take out that second sentence.
John, do you, in your opinion, do you think this section C would pass muster without a statement on, on not being grounds for disapproval?
I think that because it's already in the bylaw, um, for, for the other parts, it doesn't need to be explicitly stated here. I think it's, it's a nice piece of clarification and it might be something that somebody asks for a town meeting, but I do think from a legal standpoint, it's redundant. And when we submit everything to EO HLC for the review, it's not just going to be this bylaw, it's going to be all the, the zoning bylaws. And they're going to take a really deep dive at it and take a look at that stuff.
So it sounds like we can strike this if the board would like to. Does that sound good?
Yes, I agree.
That's true. Recommendation. Recommendation was to strike this last sentence. Yeah. Yeah. That's a majority. Okay. Um, I do need to dive into definitions. Uh, the board highlighted there were some inconsistencies. Specifically, I kept finding this term solar carport, a solar panel. But then when I reviewed the rest of the bylaw, I didn't really find something to compare it against that would give an inconsistency. Um, I was hoping the board could help me through this.
Yeah, I know there's a reference to, um, overhead solar structures. Um, so I, I just, I don't remember exactly what that terminology was. It's been a while since tackling that, the solar bylaws.
Is it in the solar bylaw section? Is it in the solar bylaw section?
Yeah, it would be in the solar bylaw section, so I've just searched through those.
I am going into it right now, so we can do so.
I mean, honestly, we should make sure that any kind of. Definitions or references here are in pairing, right? The solar just popped out to me.
So. You have roof mounted solar. That's a term that appears.
Yeah, I think it's not that one.
There's ground mounted solar, of course.
There's something specifically to overparking. Parking areas.
Apologize to. Littleton. I I apologize to Public Access TV real quick that there's so much dead air, I'm just going it through every reference here.
I'll I'll try to look at it from my side, too, Alec.
Where? Where do we, I'm sorry, we're doing definitions because these words show up.
Yes, so. So, John, you you might be able to provide some context, in your opinion, we do need to include these three definitions outright, correct?
It would definitely include as of right. Just because that's something that. Just not everybody knows what that means, that tends to make people feel better at town meeting if that's not already defined. As far as the other two go, I think those are nice to haves, I don't know if they're necessary. I think it's one of those things that if KP Law was looking at this, they would say these are things that are not defined that you guys really do need to define. So really, like, as of right, I think is the big one, and if there's any. Acronyms that are referenced or things like area median income, like saying exactly what that means is is important. But parking surface, parking structure, these are things that could be defined later or defined more generally, just the zoning bylaw, not specifically with this three A one. So I don't think EO HLC will flag it if you don't have these defined, I guess is a more succinct way of saying that.
Yeah, I mean, if these are cleanups we need to do from an overall bylaw perspective, I'd say let's defer them. But as of right, specifically is dealing with this bylaw, because the language right in five eight five one talks about. As by right. As of right. But parking structured, cave parking, surface, that's not. Talked, I mean, you have parking requirements. But you're not talking about surfaces, you're talking about spaces. We're not talking about structures, so I would say let's just defer them.
But do we not have a provision, I don't know that we have any parking garages in town, but if. Someone wants to build a parking garage. Under this. Are we caught without?
No, I think that would be considered roof mounted, Cindy.
No, no, I'm not talking about solar, I'm talking about.
Oh, sorry.
The definition of parking structure, we don't have a. Any, I mean, I think it's probably a good idea to have these in here. These are just definitions right now, right?
I I guess we're. Like, I think. We're not using parking structured in this bylaw, right? Are we? I I didn't see it.
Yeah, I didn't see it mentioned elsewhere, so if it's not being referred to elsewhere, then get rid of it.
I will note, so I found in your bylaw, you don't refer to them as solar panels, you refer to them as solar collectors.
Solar energy systems.
Yeah, that's right, solar energy systems. So if you use the word solar, it should have energy systems, but the whole, those two paragraphs of definitions. Do you have to have those?
Well, from what, so to to help translate what John just said, for example, about these last two here is. They're the things that KP Law will probably come back and say to us. You might want to also, you should probably include this as a definition, or you should include a definition of this or of that. But it's not a point of critical failure, so if we submit it to EO HLC without these two definitions. It's likely not going to give us a hiccup, it's our own town council that's going to say, we would recommend you create a definition for this. And it could look like this, it could look like something different, we could simply submit without and ask town council if we need to include any other definitions. And bring those to the next available town meeting.
I mean, I'm not against the definition, but I just don't know where it's referred to elsewhere. Definition with no. References anywhere else in the law is just hanging out there, just it's. Empty.
So if if the developer were to bring up a proposal with a parking garage. We would just describe it as such, right, we don't have to define it because. We're not putting limitation, we're not putting any zoning or dimensional requirements on it, but I guess that's. Gets me thinking, should we be thinking about adding a parking garage to our zoning bylaw?
To ask the question that might advance this, do these two definitions over complicate this for town meeting?
I I think anything you put in here that doesn't need to be here over complicates it. The the other thing, too, is you're not going to get a parking garage if you're not getting, you know, multi-story structures, you're not going to get them with two-story structures. Parking surface, maybe, but we have already got parking regs in our bylaw. So again, if they don't need to be there, let's get rid of them, and if the AG says put them in, or if the. If the attorney say, put them in, so what's the minimal amount of words, but we already have parking regs. Surfaces for sure. And solar is already in the bylaw.
Do other board members feel that these two over complicate it?
I I feel that I just don't even know where to point to, like, are they even used, like, I I see the. The closest that comes to it is we we talk about bicycle storage. Or multifamily development of ten or units or more covered. Parking bicycle parking spaces. We need to reword that, covered bicycle parking spaces shall be integrated into the structure of the buildings. Is that? Cave parking surface? No. Is that structured parking? No. I'm still not sure what the definitions are referring to.
It sounds like these two definitions are over complicating things.
Yeah.
Should we go ahead and strike them?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, it's not. Yeah, you don't need it.
Cindy, Rebecca, do you agree?
You can. Yeah, I'm fine with it, too.
Hey, I'm gonna turn into a pumpkin in two minutes.
I understand, everybody, bear with me, we're we're right here.
So stop, can you just stop in the dimensional table, I would like, still like to put a foot number in the building heights, or two stories, what are you gonna say, or? Thirty feet, or I just want to make sure we don't leave that out.
Or thirty feet? I think that's reasonable.
Can we just put another dimension? Don't we have that already in our use table?
We have maximum stories, maximum height, so we probably create a separate.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Do you need to put that in there, Cindy? I mean, if it. Already is in our bylaw?
No, because our bylaw doesn't define what a story is, we we have dimensional requirements for story and we have dimensional requirements for heights, I'm just saying, let's be precise here.
So for the purposes of. Discussion. This is now compliant with your standard table of dimensional regulations format.
Yeah, I'm good with that done, too.
Additionally, you'll note we've updated the number ten point five four acres and specifically shown as Appendix E. I provided the board a copy of Appendix E earlier today, do we want to hop over and look at that real quick?
Go ahead.
Thank you again, everybody, please bear with me. You'll see Appendix E is shown in your standard format. And then, given the size of the district, I did a blow up into it, so you could see it down to a parcel level.
Do you not have to list the parcels?
No, you can, you can adopt it through a physical map change.
Shouldn't the parcel numbers be somewhere?
No, because if someone re-divided this land in here, then the parcel numbers would change as well. So the parcel numbers would become moved.
That seems weird to me that there's no cross-reference, but. Whatever. No address, just the color of a map that somebody can't really see, I mean, I appreciate that you tried to blow it up, but. Something feels weird, but like. Not to have a parcel or an address included.
Yeah, I kind of would tend to agree with that. If we could add the the parcel numbers or something like that.
If you want me to go in and add them, I can, it just, it over complicates it if someone then. Changes, so if someone changes the, say they go in and they merge two of the Fingerling parcels. Then there's an error in there, I mean, we can use a common sense approach. Technicality, then I will need to go in and also update the map.
Well, the picture would be an error, too, then, so. Right now the picture shows all the parcels.
But it shows it based on, it shows it based on parcel dimensions. I mean, again, if you want me to add the parcel numbers, I I can. That's just a quick majority of the board. Cindy, you would prefer parcel numbers?
Yes, please.
Rebecca, would you prefer parcel numbers?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Mark, would you prefer parcel numbers?
Doesn't hurt.
Okay, there's a majority, I'll do it. Otherwise, Appendix E. As amended, ready to go.
All right.
Okay.
What's next, Alec?
What's next is simply for me to add the standard language that goes into any article. It should say, you know, to see if the town would vote to amend section so and so of the bylaw by adding the text as follows, in fact, that's almost exactly what it's gonna say. With that in mind, and that being an administrative component, if the board is prepared to do so. You could make a motion tonight to approve Article One as amended.
Make a motion to approve Article One as amended.
Second.
Moved by Mark, seconded by Chris, discussion.
Looks good.
Who's gonna make the presentation?
We can figure all that out in the coming weeks.
Unless there's more discussion, as I see you, Chris.
Dottyye.
Cindy.
Mark would say.
Mark.
Would I?
Rich.
Kazardiye.
And Werner, I. Okay, whew.
Now, Rebecca, I've I've got more good news, but we don't have to tackle it tonight. This board had asked me about containing any and all infrastructure to the overlay district. In talking with John, that's not an unreasonable proposal, if we apply universally across the board to all overlay districts. I did a quick run through, I looked at your overlay districts, I looked at the various uses. The proposal I have here would in no way. Alter or throw out of compliance any of your overlay district approved uses.
Alec, I'm gonna say this is too, we haven't seen this, have we?
This, yes, this was included in.
Okay, I guess, yeah, I missed it.
But much like I said earlier about the dimensional footnote, you'd need to do a separate public hearing for this. Rebecca, I'm gonna, real quick, just show this to you. But if the board would like to do that, to contain all infrastructure. Used to leverage a use in a use in an overlay district.
I did.
All you have to do is send me an email and I can schedule the public hearing.
Okay, yeah, I did see this now that I'm reading through it. Okay, I mean, we should probably track this similarly, so let's talk.
Yep, so effectively what I do is I propose the definition here, the definition is what accomplishes it. Do you just want, you and me want to connect tomorrow?
Yeah, I think that's, sounds good, or I don't know if we have a scheduled thing tomorrow, but. Yeah, our next meeting.
Can you make that, I'm sorry.
Um, no, go ahead, Cindy, I I don't think.
Can you make that specific to the multifamily overlay district, because I'm not comfortable applying it to all overlay.
If you want to apply the standard, you have to apply it to all overlay districts.
Well, I don't feel we've given it enough thought to decide on that tonight, so.
It's almost less relevant now that we've taken out the undeveloped land.
Yeah.
District.
Something I'll add just for conversation moving forward. You can do the dimensional regs and all the stuff needed to hit units and compliance and stuff like that, but anything else that you would want to do. In the three A district, you can't single it out and add additional development constraints, it has to apply either townwide or to all the overlay districts or something like that. So that isn't even specifically for this, this is for anything else that you guys might kick around as a, well, what if we X, Y, or Z? So that's the restriction that EO HLC has put on place. Just so we're all aware.
Rebecca, it sounds like a majority of the board is not ready to take.
I was just gonna say the same exact thing, Alec.
All right. Madam Chairperson, I'd recommend you close your public hearing and let's get out of here.
No planners report?
That's up to you.
No, okay, I would take a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
And close the public.
Oh, both to close the public hearing, that's it.
Do that first.
Second.
Okay, so moved by Cindy, seconded by Mark, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, as I see you, Cindy.
Mark would say.
Rich?
Kazardiye.
Mark?
Would I?
And Chris?
Dottyye.
And Werner, I. Okay, so.
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you. Okay, moved by Cindy, seconded by, I think it was Mark White.
And Chris, Chris beat me to it.
Okay, Chris, seconded by Chris, you got it, discussion? Not hearing any, as I see you, Chris Doughty.
Dottyye.
Rich Kazardi.
Kazardiye.
Mark White.
Would I?
Cindy Markwitz.
Mark would say.
And Werner, I, John, thank you so much for staying up with us this evening, we appreciate all of your guidance today.
Happy to do it, folks, this kind of stuff takes long hours and hard conversations, so kudos to all of you for getting there.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Good.